2020 and per executive order 2920, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act. All of the commissioners will be participating via teleconference and no members of the public will be in attendance at this meeting in the interest of public safety. Per the Brown Act, we have posted notice of the meeting agenda 72 hours in advance. This meeting is being broadcasted on YouTube and on the public TV network on cable. If for some reason your YouTube connection is not working, there should be a direct link on the city's website to the public TV broadcast. Applicants and speakers will be calling into the meeting and you'll be placed in an electronic waiting room until you are called on to speak. Since I'm remote, PJ Fitzgerald will be handling the public speaker logistics and PJ, thank you very much for that. When you call, due to the high volume we're anticipating today, you may be inadvertently dropped. Just redial and enter the queue again, and I'm thanking you in advance for any inconvenience. When it is your turn, please turn off any background noise. Even when you enter the meeting, please stay muted until it's your turn to speak, and I would ask the planning commissioners to do the same thing. I would now like to take a roll call as I call your name. Please indicate if you are present. Commissioner Austin.
I'm present.
Commissioner Boomhauer.
Present.
Commissioner Granowitz.
Present.
Commissioner Moden.
Present.
Commissioner Otsuji.
Present.
Vice Chairman Whalen.
Present.
Chairman Hoffman is present. The staff members present today are Elise Low, Director of Development Services, PJ Fitzgerald, Deputy Director of Development Services, and Brian Schoenfisch of the Planning Department. And the staff members who are participating from the city attorney's office is Deputy City Attorney Heather Ferber. And also with us is City Engineer Tony Khalil. So now I'd go ahead and like to start our agenda, and we're going to start with a public comment for non-agenda items. I don't believe there's any, but I want to check. And PJ, do you know if we have anybody here to speak on a non-agenda item?
Chairman Hoffman, we'd like to take a moment and bring our callers into the meeting room, and then we will ask them if they are here for a non-agenda comment. We did receive a number of speakers indicating non-agenda comment, but in the body of their form, they were talking about item number two. So there's a little bit of discrepancy there. We just like to be safe.
Okay. And just let me know when you feel comfortable.
So we're pulling about 25 speakers into the meeting.
Tony Khalil. Because city staff announced last week that it's partnering with a local business association is going to result in restrike parking spaces to create 23 new spots in a three-block stretch of Hancock Street next to Old Town. Why do we care? Well, it's home to a bunch of thriving local businesses, and they've always had problems with adequate parking. And city staff in the community, which was a piece of the chaperone by Councilmember Campbell's staff, worked out an arrangement to turn angled parking into 90-degree parking on an extra wide street, add the bike lanes, and then add a crosswalk for safety. This is a solution that can be applied.
That sounds strangely like somebody I know.
Yes, and I do want to have a true shout out to city staff because that was terrific. Nutshell, folks, is that it's a way to get more parking in the same space and still have bike lanes. Good job, city staff.
Okay. Are there any other public speakers here talking on non-agenda public items?
Chairman Hoffman, we don't believe so, but if there are any, we could tell them to the end of the meeting.
Okay, that sounds good. So we'll move on. Let's go to, there are no items requested to be continued or withdrawn. Consent calendar agenda, I just wanted to make a comment to the rest of the commission that, as you recall, on item number one, that was the Pacific Highlands Ranch Unit 22B amendment. There was an opposition letter filed by an attorney representing, I believe it was a neighboring HOA's. That has been withdrawn. And what I'd like to do is find out maybe, we will have public comment for this, but I wanted to see if there was any desire of any of the commissioners to move this to the consent calendar.
Move consent.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to move this to the consent calendar and a second motion by Vice Chairman Whalen, second by Commissioner Boomhauer. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, I will take a vote. We'll go in alphabetical order. Commissioner Austin.
Aye.
Commissioner Boomhauer.
Aye.
Commissioner Granowitz.
Aye.
Commissioner Moden.
Aye.
Commissioner Otsuji.
Aye.
Vice Chair Whalen.
Aye.
And Chairman Hoffman is an aye. So that has been moved to the consent calendar. So at this time, what I'd like to do is take any public testimony on this item, so I'm going to open it up for public testimony. And PJ, I'll let you organize those logistics.
Good morning. If you are here for item number one, could you please unmute yourself and introduce yourself and make yourself known to the chair? Thank you.
Amanda Pedego with Expedia Group.
Please, Amanda, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, one second. So, good morning. As I said, I'm Amanda Pedego, Head of Government Affairs for Expedia Group. The city of San Diego has gone more than 1,800 days without certainty on the topic of short-term rentals. And for more than 1,800 days, thousands of-
Amanda, can I interrupt you? I apologize. You're here for a non-agenda item, I take it, and we are actually talking about item number one already. So what I'm going to have to ask you to do is, if you could not speak to this, we'll put you back in the waiting room. And what I'll do is, I will open up the public comment period for you after we take care of this item. Okay, are there anybody else speaking on item number one? That is the Pacific Highlands Ranch Unit 22B Amendment Project.
Through the chair, and just for clarity, I believe that the speaker that was just talking was actually here for item two and not for non-agenda public comment.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Then we'll hold off till item two for that caller. Thank you, Commissioner Boomhauer. Anybody here, anybody on the phone for item number one? That's Pacific Highlands Ranch. Okay, seeing as not, we will now go ahead and take a vote to approve this item on the consent agenda, and I will take a motion.
So move.
That's a motion by Commissioner Austin, a second by Vice Chair Whalen, and we'll go through a roll call. This is to approve the Pacific Highlands Ranch Unit 22B Amendment. Commissioner Austin.
Aye.
Commissioner Boomhauer.
Aye.
Commissioner Granowitz.
Aye.
Commissioner Moden.
Aye.
Commissioner Otsuji.
Aye.
Vice Chair Whalen.
Aye.
Chairman Hoffman is an aye. So that passes unanimously. Okay, since we only have one more agenda item, the agenda is approved. We will now take directors' reports. Are there any directors' reports?
Yes.
Elise Low, please, go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman, and members of the Planning Commission and members of the public. I'm Elise Low, the Director of the Development Services Department. I want to thank everyone for participating in this virtual hearing, and we're very, very proud of our staff in the city of San Diego who've worked incredibly hard to ensure that we have a strong, transparent, open, public process and to bring this hearing to you today. So thank you very much to the staff in Development Services, as well as in the Department of IT and the others that are helping to ensure this hearing's success. Today's director's report is a little bittersweet for me. It may or may not have been previously announced, but I want to make sure that everyone knows that one of our members of our executive team is retiring, and I'm speaking of Assistant Director Greg Hopkins will be leaving the city after a successful 26 years in his career as the city's chief land surveyor and former Deputy Director of Engineering Division, as well as being the Assistant Director of the department for the last two years. He has just done an absolutely fantastic job. We've been incredibly lucky to have someone with his talents and leadership, and he'll be leaving the city at the end of the month. So if you want to drop a note to Greg Hopkins and wish him success in his retirement, I'm sure he would appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and he'll be missed for sure. Is there any other directors' reports?
No report this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, with that, we will go into commission comment, and I will go in alphabetical order. And Commissioner Austin, and unmute, please.
Yes. I just have a quick question. Last week, there was a community, there was a code update, and that's passed on to the city council. I wasn't clear on when it's likely to hit the city council, and if approved, or whatever gets approved, when will it actually be implemented and part of the code that we're acting on?
Yes, I can respond to that. Thank you, Brian Schoenfisch, Program Manager of the Planning Department. The 2020 Land Development Code Update is scheduled to go to the Land Use and Housing Committee of the City Council on October 15th. So that's a 1:00 PM meeting of the Land Use and Housing Committee. Following that, we will submit it for a council date, so we don't have a city council date at this point, but we will get back to you when that occurs.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Boomhauer. Well, you know what? I guess on these comments, I'll go ahead, just raise your hand. That way, we don't have to go through everybody. So go ahead, Commissioner Boomhauer, please.
Thank you. I just want to echo what Elise said. It is very bittersweet, but congratulations to Greg Hopkins on his retirement. He's going to be missed. He's been a consummate professional and a great guy to work with. One question for Director Low. With him leaving at the end of the month, what's the timing on naming an interim to fill his role? And then what do you think the timing is going to be on filling that role permanently?
Oh, thank you. I actually hope to announce the permanent Assistant Director in the next two to three weeks.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Commissioner Granowitz.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that during these lengthy meetings, I get up and walk around, and you won't be able to see me, but I want to assure people that I'll actually be listening. So, and I also wanted to thank Sabrina and staff for the spreadsheets with the public comment. That was an amazing amount of work, and it made it a lot easier to actually read all the public comments. So I just wanted to acknowledge you and thank you.
Okay, are there any other commissioner comments? I just wanted to echo what Elise Low said, as well as thanking the staff for all the hard work. We've come a long way since March, and this is the first time I've been at home, and it felt pretty good not to have to get in my car and drive all the way downtown. So I'm excited. So I think this has gone very well, and that specifically, it's all the staff, but I've worked closely with both PJ and Sabrina, and they've just done a terrific job. Okay, with that, we will now go into our last item, a discussion item. This is an amendment to the city's municipal code and local coastal program to impose a license requirement in operating regulations for short-term residential occupancy, including hosting platforms and repeal regulations for bed and breakfast and border lodging. And staff, if you're ready, please go ahead and give a report.
Actually, before Venus Molina begins, I just want to make sure that you know that also here on behalf of the Development Services Department, participating today, in case you have questions, is Deputy Director over Code Enforcement, Leslie Senet. And we did, in fact, submit to you, the planning commissioners, a memo about code enforcement actions regarding short-term vacation rentals, in case you have questions about how we handle that code enforcement. So additionally, we have a member of the city treasurer's office here today, Nicole Leclair Miller, is also here to answer any questions you might have about tax collection, specifically for the transient occupancy tax that the city treasurer collects from short-term vacation rentals and from hosting platforms. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Hoffman and fellow commissioners. My name is Venus Molina, and I am the Chief of Staff for Councilmember Jennifer Campbell in District Two. I'd like to start by thanking you for the opportunity to bring such a complex issue before you. This issue has been discussed and dissected for many, many years, countless hours of staff time, past council, and community meetings. An attempt was made to regulate short-term vacation rentals in 2018, and unfortunately, due to the lack of support from major stakeholders, the council had to rescind their vote. We had a one-year moratorium before anything could actually be done. Since her first day in office, Councilmember Campbell has received hundreds of emails, pictures, and phone calls regarding bad actors in the short-term rental community. People have asked for enforcement and regulations for the short-term vacation rentals. As public servants, we have the responsibility to protect our neighborhoods and residents of San Diego. We can no longer deem the status quo as acceptable. Therefore, I will share my presentation. Let me share my screen. One, please be aware. Okay. So why are we here? Currently, short-term vacation rentals are not defined in the municipal code. Minimize this. And therefore, make it extremely challenging to prosecute. If short-term rentals were defined and regulated, the city could shut down a problem rental quickly by pulling the operator's business permit. It's a simple solution and an effective one. When bad operators get put out of business, the others tend to follow the rules. Since we currently have no regulations, the city must instead go to court and rely on existing laws that deal with nuisance, trespass, noise, and other legal theories. This is not quick or easy. Litigation can take years, which is of no consolation to impacted neighborhoods. And why will this work this time? This time, it's an unprecedented time when we have two major stakeholders come to an agreement. In July 2020, Expedia Group, parent company to short-term residential occupancy brands and HomeAway, along with Unite Here Local 30, representing thousands of local hospitality workers, outlined a set of comprehensive STRO regulations in the form of an MOU. Councilmember Campbell took the suggested framework as a starting point for the proposed regulations. The ordinance based on the MOU proposes to establish regulations within Chapter Five of the San Diego Municipal Code to clarify and define short-term rental occupancy as the occupancy of a dwelling unit or part thereof for less than one month. An investigation by the interim city auditor in July 2019 determined that there are up to 16,000 dwelling units being used for STROs. Advocates for STROs cite economic benefits to local business owners with many rental hosts using the hosting platforms to access the booking service in order to supplement personal income. Opponents to STROs share concerns about impacts to the hotel industry and negative impacts to the character of residential neighborhoods. Proposed regulations would require license to operate an STRO unit, establish limits on the number of licenses a host may obtain. A host may be issued and hold only one license. Create reasonable caps on the total number of whole-home rentals, STRO units, no cap on home share. Create a licensing process in order to track, manage, and enforce all aspects of STRO use. Establish a mechanism to cite, suspend, or revoke the license of hosts not following the city's regulations. These are the four tiers broken down. One, part-time, rented for an aggregate of 20 days or less per calendar year. The owner or permanent resident does not need to reside on-site during the STRO. Tier two is home sharing, renting a room or rooms in the home, so as long as the owner or permanent resident resides on-site during the STRO for at least 275 days out of the calendar year. See the licensing process in order to track, manage, and- Hello? -all aspects of STRO use. Hi. Establish a mechanism to-
Hello?
-revoke the license of hosts not following the city's regulations. Somebody is not muted.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Venus.
That's okay. That's okay. That's what we do. We take the challenges and move ahead. So I think I left off in tier two. Tier two, the owner or permanent resident may be absent from the permanent residence during the STRO for up to 90 days per calendar year. Home sharing includes duplex properties and eligible accessory dwelling units when the host resides on-site. Tier three, rentals for more than 20 days per year where the owner or permanent resident does not reside on-site. The amount of whole-home STRO licenses issued will not exceed 0.75% of San Diego's total housing units citywide for a current total of 4,050 outside of the Mission Beach community planning area. Whole-home STRO units in Mission Beach shall not be counted in the citywide whole-home cap, two-night minimum stay for guests. Tier four, Mission Beach whole-home. Rentals for more than 20 days per year where the owner or permanent resident does not reside on-site in the Mission Beach community planning area. The amount of whole-home STRO licenses will not exceed 30% of the total housing units in the Mission Beach community planning area for a current total of 1,081, two-night minimum stay for guests. Coastal Act requires that lower-cost visitor accommodations be protected, encouraged, and where feasible provided. There are no hotels or motels in South Mission Beach. The only visitor accommodations in South Mission Beach are STROs. 309 property owners have three or more units in the Mission Beach neighborhood. A severe restriction on STROs in Mission Beach could have an adverse impact on public access and visitor-serving opportunities in this area. Proposed regulations. The host may obtain a maximum of one STRO license at a time. Applicants will be required to provide a valid transient occupancy registration certificate and rental unit business tax certificate. Two-night rentals required in tier three and four only to reduce problems and disturbances associated with daily turnover in the most impacted areas. Guests provided with a good neighbor policy to make the guests familiar with trash, parking, and other rules of conduct, including a local contact to respond within an hour. Administration. We plan to create a new Office of Short-Term Residential Occupancy for program management and enforcement. Hire program managers and code enforcement officers. Establish digital license and registration system that interfaces with city databases and allows pass-through registration with platforms. And this is expected to be implemented before ordinance effective date of January 1, 2022. License fees. Biannual license fees shall be assessed at varying rates based on estimated services, requirements, and costs to the city. STRO licenses must be renewed biannually. The city council will be asked to consider licensing and renewal fees closer to the January 1, 2022 effective date. Hosting platform compliance. Require the host to include an STRO license number in any listing posted on an STRO platform. Verify that the STRO license number against the city's registry and deactivate any STRO listing that lacks a verified license number. Collect and remit all applicable taxes and fees monthly to the city on the host's behalf and provide resources or training to hosts on the prevention of human trafficking. Land development code amendments are as follows. Proposes removal of bed and breakfast establishments and border and lodge accommodations from the zoning tables. Proposes additional changes to conform uses to proposed STR regulations. New uses would be required to comply with the STRO regulations, and previously conforming uses would continue to be allowed. Our timeline. Full compliance with every section in the ordinance will be required by hosts and hosting platforms by January 1, 2022. Once the ordinance is approved by council, city staff will create administrative regulations that will detail how licenses will be issued and administered. And conclusion, we recommend the planning commission approval of the proposed ordinance and recommendation to the city council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Right now, what I'd like to do is take just clarification questions from the commission. And I'd like to start, I've got actually a few clarification questions, and I'm going to try and keep within the bounds of not discussing the item, but I would like to get some clarity. The first question I have is, if we stayed status quo, we did not adopt this ordinance, then technically, these uses are really not governed, they wouldn't really be technically allowed, but we have 16,000 units out there today. So could you tell me, if we stayed status quo, how difficult, and if you can get into it a little bit, how difficult would it be to enforce that and to actually get that under control versus not going forward with an ordinance?
We can't. We can't get it under control. And as we're seeing now with what we see at Pinnacle and the short-term rental in Bankers Hill, our city attorney has spent countless hours and taxpayer dollars in prosecuting and coming after the short-term vacation rentals. That's time. It's our taxpayers' dollars. If we have regulations in the book, this is a quick way to actually regulate and enforce any kind of criminal activity in the short-term vacation rentals. And at the same time, for us at the city, we will be collecting all of the TOT and the fees and licenses that will be offered to the host for us to remit to the city.
And those fees that we collect, will they also be used for enforcement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. The second question I have is, you know, we received, gosh, it seemed like thousands, but at least a couple hundred emails, and so many of them talked about the lack of their public involvement. I saw the Zoom meeting of the Pacific Beach Group, and quite frankly, your staffer there didn't do the best job of answering their questions, but could you go into a little bit of detail of the community outreach and the reasons for the timing?
Sure. We actually, as I mentioned at the beginning, Councilmember has been working on this from day one. This has been one of her biggest issues in making sure, number one, she originally wanted to pursue the, making them illegal and upholding the code. We soon realized at the beginning of her term that that was not possible. We needed enforcement, and we needed to really have something in the books in order to actually prosecute and get rid of the bad actors. We have been having meetings with communities, with stakeholders, hoteliers, since day one, for the last, from last year to this year. This has been an ongoing issue, and as I also mentioned at the beginning, this has been an issue that has been dissected for many, many years. There was a lot of community input at council, at committee. I do recall being at a 12-hour council meeting with this issue, and I think we all know what the problems are. I do recall being at a 12-hour council meeting with this issue, and I think we all know what the problems are, the lack of enforcement, and the fact that we cannot uphold the code. And that's, you know, and that's pretty much what we've been hearing from folks, you know, either people that want to uphold the code or people that, you know, want to see these short-term rentals controlled and enforced and regulated.
Great, thank you for that.
Sure.
My other clarification question, the good neighbor policies, these obviously are critical to actually making people as happy as they can be. Can you talk about, I didn't really see specific policies. Will that be developed after this ordinance is adopted, or will they vary, will they be the same? Can you talk a little bit about how that will work?
So the good neighbor policy that we adopted was the good neighbor policy that everybody agreed to in 2018. It was something that seemed to be a consensus with all of the parties, from community to staff and platforms. So it's something that we definitely took on, and a lot of the fine tuning will happen through the admin regs, which staff has a whole year to actually get a lot of those things in place and in order before the ordinance comes into effect in January 1, 2022.
Okay, thank you. The last question I have has to do with the licensing. I think I see a loophole unintended, or maybe it's intended, or maybe I just got it wrong, so I'm going to ask you about it. But an STR host is defined as a natural person who has the legal right to occupy the dwelling unit. And a host may obtain just one license at a time, and the license is based on the host. Now, the host can be an owner, or it can be anyone who has the legal right to occupy the dwelling unit, to allow the short-term residential occupancy. So what if a married couple jointly owns one unit, they are both natural persons who have the legal right to occupy the dwelling unit? Can those couple get two separate licenses?
And actually, I'm going to bounce that. I think I know the answer, but because I think we get into legal, I would probably bounce that over to our deputy city attorney, Heather Ferbert.
Good morning, Chairman. I would ask a clarifying question. Are you asking whether they could get, one, two licenses for the same property?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm asking.
So no, because the licenses would be tied, well, if there's three units on the property, then potentially, but if they're whole home, then they would still be subject to the lottery as well. So one permit, one license per natural person?
But it doesn't tie it to a unit. That's what's missing. To me, that's the missing link, the loophole. I don't see any tie to a unit, it's just tied to a host.
It's definitely something we can look into further.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And again, the reason I bring it up is I could totally extend the license way beyond the intent.
Yes, thank you, and we'll definitely take that into consideration and discuss it further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. And any other clarifying questions? And I'm going to, I think everyone's going to have some, so I'm going to just go in, I'll go in reverse order. Vice Chairman Wayland?
Good morning. Thanks, Chairman Hoffman. Thank you, Venus, that was a very good succinct presentation.
Thank you.
Since everybody knows that this is not our first rodeo on this matter, we all have, except for the newer commissioners, we all have a bit of a background on it, and to me, it all boils down to the legal basis for why we're here. I've read that there are people who don't believe that we need to do what we're doing, and I would like the deputy city attorney to comment on the city's official legal position on where we are standing with this and why we need to have regulations.
And before you answer, I would remind all the planning commissioners, and Jim, you were right there, so no objection at all to what you just said, but these are all clarification questions.
Correct.
Okay.
What is the legal basis for our proceeding?
Right.
The municipal code does not define what a short-term vacation rental is, and there's no clarity on what the city is attempting to regulate at this time. Our office has, therefore, since 2007, consistently recommended that council enact short-term rental regulations that are fair and enforceable. So that's been our office's position for some time.
With that basis, it will be more straightforward as we proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Otsuchi, any clarification questions?
I have no clarification. I do have a lot of questions, but I think it would get into lengthy discussion, so I'll wait until the proper time.
Appreciate that. Okay, Commissioner Moden, any clarification questions?
On the Mission Beach carve-out, there is 3,600 homes. How many, do we know, Venus, how many of that, of the 16,000 units that are estimated are Mission Beach-dedicated short-term rentals?
So out of the 16,000, how many are in Mission Beach?
Correct.
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I can definitely get that for you. I know that there's a statistic and data out there somewhere, but I can definitely get that for you before the meeting's over, for sure.
Okay. The rest of my stuff is more conversational.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Granowitz, any clarifying questions?
Yes, in the public comment letters, one of the questions that came up is that will this rescind the bed and breakfast ordinances? And then the second question that came up is that regarding ADUs and whether ADUs will be allowed to be short-term vacation rentals. So if you could clarify those.
Sure. So bed and breakfasts have a CUP, and any of those that have a CUP will be in existence where they will be grandfathered in. So any future bed and breakfasts or plan for bed and breakfasts after this ordinance is passed will have to abide by the new code, which is a short-term vacation rental. So anything that is in existence will be grandfathered in, as when it comes to the granny flats or ADUs, anything built prior to 2017 will be eligible for a short-term vacation rental, anything after that will not.
All right, thank you very much.
Commissioner Blumhauer?
So Commissioner Granowitz just asked my lead-in ADU question. I'm going to come back to that probably in a pretty significant way when we get to get to my later comment period. So I guess the clarifying question I have right now is, and I know there's a rep from the city treasurer's office on the line, so this may be directed at her. Is the city treasurer even set up to handle this additional volume of TOT collection? Because my understanding is that dealing with the hotel corporations is one thing, but suddenly having to deal with this number of individual residents seems like it could be overwhelming if the treasurer doesn't have that capacity organic already.
That would be for?
So we need Nicole Miller to unmute herself?
Nicole.
Nicole, I see you on, but I see that you're muted. Are we able to unmute Nicole? Commissioner Blumhauer, if you could repeat the question. I've done a lot of work with the city treasurer on this issue, I could try to answer it to the best of my ability.
Okay, so my concern is, it seems like we're, like, I understand that the city attorney's office is already collecting TOT from the hotel operators in the city. This seems like it's adding a whole new tranche of folks that we're going to have to be collecting TOT from, and it's going to be happening on a recurring, a very different basis and with a different tempo than what we're seeing with hotels, I think, I don't know. So I'm just concerned if the city treasurer even feels like they can handle this additional load.
I'll try to answer on behalf of the treasurer, and if Nicole jumps in, that's perfectly appropriate. I know that the city treasurer collects TOT from approximately 300 hotels, and they collect TOT from approximately, I believe it's a couple thousand vacation rentals. And then they also collect TOT in bulk remittance from the hosting platforms, and they are not sure what units those, the bulk remittance of TOT is attached to, because it comes in a bulk. So with what District 2 has proposed, it would allow essentially, and Venus, please correct me if I'm wrong on the number of licenses, but if it's approximately 1,600 licenses in Mission Beach plus the 3,600 in the lottery, and then an unlimited number of licenses, it's fair to say it'll probably anywhere between 5,000, 6,000, or 7,000 licenses. And as a city, we are working together to look at a new software system to handle both the licensing and revenue collection as well as the enforcement. So we would need to have an upgrade for that.
And I also would like to, also like to mention that we will be creating the Office of Short-Term Vacation Rentals so that a lot of the remittance, a lot of the licensing, everything that has to do with short-term vacation rentals should be run by that office. And I just wanted to correct, the numbers in Mission Beach is 1081, and overall, for the cap numbers of whole homes is 4,050. And I did get the answer for Mission Beach, Commissioner Moden, it's approximately 1,500 right now. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, that more or less answers my question. I guess the bottom line is, we're going to be looking at significant infrastructure upgrades as a part of this, and treasurer's going to need to be involved with that. So, okay, thank you, that's what I had, Chair Hoffman.
Thank you. Commissioner Austin? Any clarifying?
Yes, I do, I just have one question, and that is, you know, I assume in most of these kinds of projects, you look at other cities that have had either problems or successes. And I'm curious if there was a particular city that you used as a model where what we're implementing here, close to it, has been working and working well?
Yes, actually, since 2018, there's been a lot of either court rulings or updates to different cities and their ordinances. I think we took, it's a combination of San Francisco, we looked at Santa Monica, we looked at Long Beach, we've looked at different cities, and I'm pretty sure the city attorney can also opine, because we've been working together on the ordinance, and I know it's a combination of, I think it's of different city ordinances and things that have actually been able to be upheld in courts as well. So, sorry.
Doug, you went on mute. Doug, you're muted.
Oh, my dog's starting to go crazy. Right, that's the beauty of being at home. No, thank you, that answered my question. I did hear, I think, most of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that will conclude the commissioner clarification questions, and we will now go, excuse me, we'll wait, and Elise, please, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that I heard stated in the presentation, and I want to make sure the planning commission is aware. Number one, we do have code sections in the code. The presentation said there are no code sections about short-term rentals, and that she's correct, it's not defined, but Code Section 1410302E specifically says, "An ADU shall not be used for a rental for less than 30 days." So that is, in essence, a short-term rental, and that is something that is enforced. Additionally, in the code, it also restricts residential and commercial areas in certain zones to a minimum of seven-day stays, and that is something that has been enforced ongoing by code enforcement. So I want to have everyone understand for the record that there is, that there are regulations being enforced, it is not a complete absence of code enforcement on short-term rentals. I do agree, though, that we don't have holistic short-term rentals within the code, and that is the purpose of this, but I just wanted to provide that clarification. Lastly, just to provide you a bit of data, because of the question Commissioner Blumhauer asked about ADUs and the response regarding that only ADUs prior to 2017 will be, only ADUs prior to 2017 will be enforced. We reviewed the number of permitted ADUs from the year 2000 to the year 2017, and there are approximately 100 of those permits. So the council has successfully passed legislation that has streamlined ADUs permitting, and we've had now upwards of 7, 800 ADUs permitted since 2017, but prior to that, there was only 100. There were several guest quarters, a lot more guest quarters that were permitted, but those are not permitted for rental. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, we will go ahead and open up the public testimony portion, and I know we have a number of speakers, so I want to set the rules for everybody, so please listen carefully. I'm going to allow only one minute per speaker because of the sheer volume of speakers that we have, and we have to, we want to get through this item today. And also, what I would ask you very sincerely, please don't repeat comments that have already been made, that will save a lot of time, but schedule and figure out what you can say within one minute of time. And PJ, I'm going to turn it over to you to let those speakers in. And again, this is PJ, you're muted, but we're looking for speakers for item number two.
Good morning, Chairman Hoffman. As you mentioned, we have a very high volume of speakers today. I would like to note for the record that we received almost 500 public comment letters on this item, and all those folks were given the call-in number for today's meeting. We currently have a large volume of speakers on the line, so as you mentioned, we will be timing everyone at one minute. We will be calling you by the last four digits of your phone number of record. You will be asked to unmute yourself, and you can do that by hitting star six on your phone. You'll then have a minute. You will then be taken out of the meeting room so we can make room for other callers. So we're going to start right now with caller with the last four digits, 2822. Caller with the four digits, 2822, you've been unmuted, and please hit star six and begin speaking.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. I'm Keith Maddox with the San Diego and Imperial Counties Labor Council. I've spoken numerous times on this issue, which is an important issue for our union members. It impacts our communities, it impacts our affordable housing crisis, it impacts jobs. I'd like to thank Bridget Browning and Amanda Pettigo and Dr. Jen for working on reasonable regulations that protect the 200,000 working families we represent. They have proposed common sense solutions to complicated problems shared by all San Diegans. Their proposal returns housing units to the market, removes the unfair advantage STRs have over the hospitality industry, and funds night and weekend code enforcement, and much more. While not perfect, if we continue to leave this industry unchecked, these problems will continue and only get worse. We have debated this critical issue for years, it is now time to act and bring it to a close. I encourage the planning commission to support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next caller will be caller 2947. Please unmute yourself and start speaking. will be caller 2947. Please unmute yourself and start speaking.
Good morning. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, please start speaking.
Thank you. My name is Brooke Empi, and I share my home and welcome guests to San Diego. I've been a host on Airbnb for seven years, and I'm emailing and speaking to you to ask that you increase the proposed cap on the short-term rentals in our city. Hosting helps to supplement our income and allows us to afford living in an expensive city. Restricting short-term rentals isn't the answer. The numbers show that this is what the majority of the traveling public want. In addition, people want to rent out their properties to travelers. If this wasn't the case, sites like Airbnb and VRBO would have failed. Instead, they've skyrocketed and shown that this is a new normal, a new normal that cities need to adapt to. The drastic cap proposed in this ordinance will be particularly harmful to me. Hosting makes living in a very expensive city a little easier and brings huge amounts of much-needed tax money to San Diego. Everyone is trying to stay afloat in this expensive city, and being able to host helps make this possible. Not being able to host our short-term rental would create a financial hardship for us that could further be impacted if we had to rent to a tenant who has the potential to not pay and has been protected by the law for doing so. As hosts, we depend on this income for our livelihood, especially since the pandemic has taken such a toll on us already. Without the ability to host, many of us will be forced to leave our homes, and we have had for years, some for decades, and the city will lose income.
Next caller, please, will be number 6857. On deck is number 6473. So caller 6857, you've been unmuted. Please start speaking. You have a minute.
Should we go to the next, you think?
Sure, we'll go to caller number 6473.
Good morning. My name is Rudy Perrino, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to the council. I grew up in San Diego, and I'm a homeowner in San Diego. I purchased a triplex in Pacific Beach. My mother lives in one of the units, and I have long-term renters in another unit. And I have, I rent another unit out as a short-term rental. 2020, despite the COVID virus, has been a success for us. And I do support reasonable regulations of short-term rentals. I don't think that the current ordinance is perfect, and I'll be addressing some of the concerns there. But I do appreciate Commissioner Campbell's efforts and Ms. Molina's efforts to draft a reasonable regulation. I'll be working with them. I do support approval of this ordinance to the next step with recommendation to the city council.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to ask for caller 0638. Please hit star six and speak. Okay, we will move on to caller 3732. You've been unmuted. Please hit star six and begin to speak.
Good morning. My name is John Choi, Policy Manager for Airbnb. I want to begin by thanking Councilmember Jen Campbell and her team. This framework is thoughtful and comprehensive, and we appreciate her steadfast leadership on this issue. However, I'm here to state Airbnb's opposition, in opposition of the vast majority of our hosts because of the overly restrictive limits on the allowed number of rentals. This cap will cut revenue for the city deeply at a time of great need. It will hurt small businesses who depend on visitors. It will hurt local residents who depend on sharing their homes, and it will restrict affordable access to the coast for many families, further increasing inequity. In 2019, the Airbnb community generated more than $700 million in economic activity across the city. That's meaningful spending at local small businesses and communities that traditionally have not benefited from the tourism economy. Over the past several weeks, we've heard from our hosts who overwhelmingly expressed their top concern as the 0.75% limit on Tier Three home rentals. Our ask is this commission to support a modest increase to 1.2%. This cap will still address concerns raised by community leaders and capture more of the economic activity SDRs generate for the city. These are all reasons to keep fighting for a proposal that reaches the right balance.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next caller, please, will be last four digits, 8190. You've been unmuted. Please start speaking. You have one minute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please begin.
I'm sorry, I'm 2967, but for some reason I wasn't unmuting until just now.
No problem. Go right ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I'm Amanda Pettigo. You heard from me earlier on behalf of Expedia Group. And I'm really happy to be here today to-
Amanda, you might have muted yourself accidentally.
The city of San Diego has gone for more than 800, 1,800 days, excuse me, without certainty on the topic of short-term rentals. And that's 1,800 days where homeowners and property managers have worried about their, whether their right to rent will be taken away, leaving employees and local small businesses out in the cold. It's more than 1,800 days where the residents of San Diego are concerned about the impact on their neighborhoods and wondering when the city will act. We're really proud to support this compromise because we understand that enough is enough. If this pandemic has taught us anything, it's that only by bridging the divisions among us will we have a chance to move forward. We want to thank Dr. Campbell, Venus, and the rest of our staff, the team at Unite Here, and everyone who recognizes that this really is the best path forward to San Diego, for San Diego. And we really hope the council will enact it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is 7717.
Excuse me, this is 8190. You called on me?
8190. If that's, please state your name and-
Hi, my name-
Yeah, and go ahead and begin.
Thank you. My name is Beverly Atkins. I split my time between Los Angeles and San Diego, and I own a second home in Ocean Beach. And for the past four and a half years, I've been renting it out through the Airbnb platform. I've rented it with zero incidences. I'm very respectful of the neighborhood. I spend time there. I am part of the community when I am there. And when I am not there, as I mentioned, I rent it out. My concern is that the lottery system will allow less responsible hosts and investors who are buying up properties just to rent out. And if they have the same shot at renting out their home as I do, that my second home will sit empty while San Diego misses out on much-needed tax revenue. I will keep my home, and it will sit empty if I'm not chosen. And I would appreciate consideration for people who have second homes versus investors who are taking up properties. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, caller. The next number will be 7717. You've been unmuted. You have one minute to speak. Please hit star six and begin speaking.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Drew. I'm on the radio at Unite Here. And I just want to say that in the pre-support, you know, this short-term rental ordinance supported by Councilman Campbell and Expedia Group and Unite Here has been working on. Because that seems to me to be, it's a good compromise to protect, you know, our industry, the hospitality industry. As you guys probably know, like, the COVID has really hurt hotels and cars. We live through work in that industry that's suffered. And by, you know, doing this, you know, these short-term rentals have already put a lot of strain on our industry, and I think even more so now. And so by having a group of regulations to help reduce, you know, this strain and could help us in our family to survive during the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller is 0381.
That was caller 0381. Please say your name.
Hi, my name is Nate Miller. And first of all, thanks for allowing me to speak today. But I, I'm a resident of Obie and Sunset Cliffs, and I've used Airbnb both to rent my place and I've used it, obviously, while vacationing. And from that perspective, it's a little different. I actually think this proposal needs to be even more restrictive than it's outlined. Using like the total number of properties in San Diego as the bogus seems like a way to over-populate the total Airbnbs in our beach communities to overly, to an amount that should be far lower. The sense of neighborhood in these beach communities has really been eroded by that overabundance of those short-term rentals. We really no longer know our neighbors and have any sense of community. And all of that is kind of being lost just to generate income for Airbnb, impacting all parking noise levels and getting lots and lots of littering around our neighborhoods. I'd rather see a lot more longer-term rentals for that community type of feel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. The next caller is 0297, please. Hit star six and begin speaking.
Good morning. My name is Flare Jitowdy. I just wanted to point out that while I support this ordinance, that it will specifically only be targeting the city of San Diego. And I just wanted to highlight that this is an issue that is impacting all of San Diego County. While I'm aware that this is, this board here doesn't have any power to do anything about that, I just wanted to let my voice be heard in that this is impacting neighborhoods outside of PB and Obie and Mission Beach. And it is specifically impacting areas like La Mesa and Mount Helix. So if this could be expanded to include the whole county and areas of the county that are also being affected, I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. The next caller is 5629, please.
Yes, hi, good morning. My name is Joby Paradis of Francis. I live in the Mission Hills neighborhood. I just want to say this is legalizing short-term rentals, which will basically do the same harm that is doing to the neighborhoods right now. And everybody talks about during the pandemic. Sadly, my wife and I work from home. My kids attend school from home. And within 20 feet of my house, there's a giant vacation rental. We had, we had to listen to yelling and screaming at the pool all day, every day, during work and school. Have reached out to the owner many times with no result. And now they are shamelessly advertising the property as a hotel for sale, for twice what it would be in the neighborhood for some family to occupy it as a residence. So these people are shameless in just turning neighborhoods into commercial properties now. And we cannot legalize short-term rentals with this proposal. We need to come up with something a lot more restrictive and a lot more neighborhood-friendly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, caller. The next number is 7910.
PJ, could you, I didn't even hear that. Could you repeat that? Got it. There, there.
910.
Hello. Hello, and thanks for your time. My name is Michael Bunyard. I'm a 58-year-old San Diego beach area resident and gigantic STR advocate. Thank you to the commission for their time and Councilmember Jen Campbell as well for her efforts. The bottom line is I've worked very hard, my fingers to the bone, my entire life to afford rental property. If you ban STRs, or for some reason I don't receive a permit, you will effectively take away 2/3 of my total income. I will lose everything, including my 18-year-old son Alex's college tuition. Do you really want that? I don't think people want that on their conscience. Just want to say that drastically reducing or eliminating STRs is not going to fix the housing crisis woes in San Diego. It is unfair to enact laws that force us property owners to lose 1/2 to 2/3 of our annual income because the city has choked off all new building by making it impossible for developers to get permits. Not really our problem.
Time is up. Your one minute is up. We have the next caller, please. 9535, please.
Caller 9535, if you can unmute, star six, and begin speaking.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Giancarlo Vega. And I would just like to express my support for the short-term rental ordinance, which is supported by my labor union, Unite Here Local 30. The hospitality industry today is under stress from COVID. We are struggling to get by in the support of the city. Competing against unregulated short-term rentals has been an additional burden for years. But today you have an opportunity to put in place rules that alleviate that burden. Please support these regulations and protect our jobs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller is 2555.
That was 2555, I believe. If that's you, please unmute and go and start.
Then we will go to the next speaker, 9890, please. Hit star six and begin speaking. You'll have one minute.
Okay, hopefully they'll be back.
Yep, we are going to move on to caller with the last four digits, 9292.
Hello? Hello?
Hello, we can hear you. State your name.
Good morning. This is 9292, Peter Goteel.
Okay, Peter, you have one minute. Please go ahead.
Thank you for the commission for letting me speak directly. I'm a six-year Airbnb super host with over 450 positive reviews. I live in probably one of the older, if not the third-oldest, community, University Heights. My job to get those reviews is to deliver for my neighbors, my guests, and my community. And I have earned that responsibility. Airbnb income supports over 50% of my monthly income. And I think the position should be to reward those hosts who are doing a good, responsible job rather than applying a one-size-that's-all approach for the negative actors such as Bankers Hill or the beach communities. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Peter.
I'm, I'm 9890. I was the previous one. Can you hear me?
We can sure hear you. If you could just state your name and please proceed. You have one minute.
My name is Debbie Lowkink. I'm a member of the Carmel Valley Planning Board. And I, and I, can you hear me?
We sure can.
And I, I hope that we can limit the single, the short-term rentals. Being a realtor in North County for the last 21 years, I feel that they deteriorate the communities. They've changed the neighborhoods to become businesses. That's not the daily narrative that families want to deal with, nor is it zoned for that. By and large, neighbors will be the policemen, being first to recognize any inappropriate behavior and issues that arise. This is, the money is the only thing that is driving, the driving factor, and it's not neighborhood enrichment. There are many short-term rentals that I've dealt with in the last 20 years. And long-term year rentals will help the shortage of having, and bring more income to those owners.
One minute is up. Thank you, caller. We will now move on to caller number 2555. You'll have one minute to speak. Please hit star sticks and begin speaking.
Hi, my name's Andrea Schlagder. I'm the chair of the Ocean Beach Planning Board. And I just really have to laugh at all the hosts that are coming here. I mean, one of the first ladies that spoke straight up said that she doesn't want to rent to long-term renters, and she prefers tourists. And that's what we've been seeing in the communities where this is most effective. The other blatant lie that's being created around is that Venus and Jennifer Campbell's staff came to us to try to talk about this. We said the one recommendation we want for a tiered system, for a permitting system, is distance requirements between the permits so whole neighborhoods wouldn't get sold out. Where is that in the proposal? It's not there because they don't actually want to compromise with anyone who isn't Airbnb or Expedia. And then the other homeowner who came and asked you to care more about second homeowners than real estate events- than real estate investors, no. Care about your residents who can barely afford their rent that keeps going up and up. Care about the residents who have been pushed out of their lifetime communities because people have been converting their apartments to Airbnb.
Thank you, Andrea, very, very much. We get your point, and we'll go to the next speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. And that speaker is 02. Hit star six, please, begin speaking.
Could you repeat that number? There we go.
Hi, this is Jason Anderson. And as a responsible Airbnb host, I encourage you not to adopt the MOU as drafted. It's unfortunate and extremely disappointing that Councilmember Campbell and her staff chose to draft this MOU without the input of the short-term vacation rental community, specifically Airbnb and responsible hosts as myself. It's also unfortunate that because the San Diego City Council is unable to adequately do its job, we're here today. While I appreciate the hotel industry and its employees are struggling right now due to the pandemic, should San Diego want to support its broader tourism industry, not just those represented by the union that helped draft this MOU, we must continue to allow for short-term vacation rentals, especially because the general public does not feel comfortable staying in hotels at this time. I'm not against proper regulation, but passing a broad moratorium to address a limited number of bad actors is not responsible. As has been stated, Airbnb hosts are hosts for many reasons, one of which is to offset the high cost of housing in San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller is 3009.
Hello. Hello, I'm Bridget Browning, president of Unite Here Local 30. We represent, or we represented before the pandemic more than 6,000 hospitality workers. We've been working on this for years, and the city has failed to pass rules that effectively regulate this industry, and it's had exponential growth. In that time, our members have dealt with an unfair and unlevel playing field from unregulated competition. And there's been no direction from the city about how to deal with nuisance homes. The status quo is not working for us. We need to establish a level playing field that weeds out the bad actors but still allows responsible operators to continue. The regulations we proposed along with Expedia do just that. It is representative of the community and takes into consideration San Diego's diverse opinions on this issue. I urge you to support this ordinance today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller is 6694.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. State your name.
Okay.
Go ahead, and you have one minute.
Yeah, my name is Greg Knight, and I was actually part of the Mission Beach Town Council that drafted our ordinance on a compromise for short-term vacation rentals. And we spent over a year at my kitchen table coming up with this. And one of our, our things were you need very strict requirements in the permitting. This ordinance does not have strict requirements. There is absolutely no maximum, maximum occupancy. There is no neat way to comply with illegal dwellings. And we need enforcement down here, which a warning and basically your permit is your warning. So what I'm saying is we spent years on coming up with this, this compromise, and Jen Campbell's proposal does not do nearly enough. I'm encouraging you to deny this proposal and send it back to the drawing board and come up with more details on how you're going to use the enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And PJ, before we go to the next speaker, I just want to ask the planning commissioners, would anybody like or need a short break? I see one, so let's take a break. We'll keep it short in deference. I know Vice Chairman Wayland will be leaving at noon, so if we can have 10 minutes, reconvene, and we'll start precisely at 10:25. Okay, we are going to go ahead and get started again. We are in the public testimony portion of the meeting. And PJ, if you could introduce the next speaker.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. The next speaker will be 3498. Please hit star six and begin speaking. You'll have one minute.
Hi, this is JD Stall, STR owner. All I've heard about is problems in residential zones. This issue is a zoning issue. I bought my homes in a commercial area with all sorts of commercial activities. There's a tattoo parlor, there's, there's a SRO hotel with 14 sex offenders, all within 100 feet of my STRs. But you're going to count my homes that are zoned commercial, the same as a residential property in La Jolla. Part of this committee's process is supposed to be zoning. There should be zones for STRs. It shouldn't just be random and the same throughout the entire city. You know, I would ask that you allow them in any zone that allows visitor accommodations or that you allow a neighborhood use permit for properties that are zoned mixed-use. It makes sense, you won't hear one objection to anybody in a commercial zone today on, on all these phone calls that we're listening to. I have 12,000 cars a day passing down each street that my STRs are on, okay? With sex offenders living.
That is, your minute is up. Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you very much.
The caller, last four digits, 6857. Please begin speaking. Caller 6857, you have been unmuted. Please hit star six, you may begin speaking. Okay, we shall.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Thank you much. Sorry about that. This is Roland Bush, current resident of Golden Hill, former resident of Ocean Beach. I am now a resident of Golden Hill because I was forced out of my apartment to five years so that they could remodel and turn it into a short-term vacation rental. You know, the gentleman before me, although some of the points, but he does make an excellent point, the cities that have weathered this storm have done exactly what he has said, have limited it to commercial zones, and I highly recommend that you ignore this proposal and start from scratch, leading with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, caller, next up is number 2781.
Yes, hello. My name is Matt Gardner. I'm the president of the Mission Beach Town Council and small business owner in the Mission Beach area. I'm here to speak in favor of this proposal. In 2019, June of 2019, the general membership of the Mission Beach Town Council voted a very strong in favor of a, our own proposal that Greg Knight indicated we worked very hard on. And that, that was what we did in our own good faith, try to move this along. And Jen Campbell took very strong key components from our proposal and included them in this, including the 30% cap. That was something we came up with. The one permit per person, that's something we came up with. And the strong enforcement arm, that is something that was included greatly based on the work that we did. This includes fines, this includes revocation of permits for bad actors, so the enforcement arm is there. The permitting fees will go a long way to hiring many code enforcement officers that will be dedicated to this problem. It is a great compromise solution that listened to both sides of this issue. It did not include a lot of cooks in the kitchen for probably, you know, the sake of time and efficiency because this has been kicked down the can for too long, and we would like to see movement on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And PJ, before we go to the next one, I, just because we had a break, I want to remind all the speakers that we're limiting your testimony to one minute, so please adjust your presentation accordingly. Okay, next.
Thank you, Chairman Hoffman. And also for the record, I would like to note, we have about 25 more callers on the phone line, so we'll keep moving ahead with speaker number 7250. You've got a minute. Please hit star six and begin speaking.
Hi, my name is Bill Bush. I was a short-term rental host for 12 years. And so first of all, for Commissioner Wayland, you want legal basis? Try this. Take out your pencil and write down section 59.5.0101, enforce the noise abatement ordinance. I never had a problem. And we I never had a problem, and we recently had a problem with the vacation rental that's two doors away. I went over after a rowdy Sunday night, showed them the noise abatement, they were quiet for four days. So Commissioner Austin, Doug, you wanted to know things at work? Enforce the noise abatement rules. If you do that, basically it will get rid of the bad actors. And it'll also probably get rid of half of the weed whackers across the city as well because they're all in violation of the ordinance. So it drives us taxpayers crazy when you guys have a law right in front of you that all you have to do is enforce it. It would get rid of the bad actors. Money-wise, charge each rental $1,000, that'll generate $4 million. All that money should be designated to creating affordable housing or rent subsidies to report.
You're going to go to the next speaker. Thank you.
2467, please hit star six and begin speaking. Okay, we will move ahead to number 2701.
My name, excuse me, I'm 2467.
Thank you, go ahead.
My name is John Fixton. I'm a native San Diegan, and I'm a board member of Safe San Diego Neighborhoods. On behalf of our 2,500 members, we would urge the committee to commission to not recommend this ordinance. We suggest the commissioners review the reports of comparable cities, Santa Barbara, Los Angeles, Santa Monica. There's no other city in the United States that we're aware of that tried to institute this kind of ordinance. There's also on the books, because short-term rentals are not an enumerated use, and we've had non-enumerated uses enforced before, the city can remove them. The idea that there is no ability for, or no regulation, and no ability for the city to enforce the non-conforming use is just erroneous. And on behalf of the members of Safe San Diego Neighborhoods, we urge the commissioners to reject this.
Thank you. Thank you, John. That's your minutes up.
Yes, sir. The next caller is number 2701.
Hi, I'm Larry Webb, a 30-year-plus resident of Mission Beach, who along with my wife, a hands-on managed vacation rental, that's our retirement income. I'm the board member on the Mission Beach Town Council. I'm sure you'll hear from someone today claiming that the Mission Beach Town Council does not represent residents of Mission Beach, only STRs. That's not true. 10 of the current 15 board members are full-time residents of Mission Beach, who are good stewards to the community and believe that a limited number of properly licensed and regulated vacation rentals fit into the Mission Beach community where we live. This is not a perfect compromise. As a resident, I would like to see day and nighttime occupancy limits more defined and there be more robust enforcement. Thank you, Dr. Campbell, for taking on this challenging issue at a time when others on the city council choose to make it a campaign issue instead of finding a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Caller will be 3565. You'll have one minute. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Brian White. I'm the president of the Pacific Beach Town Council, and I want to say we urge you to reject this ill-advised ordinance. Our Pacific Beach Town Council was not consulted at all for feedback on the short-term rental issue, and the same goes for many of the other community groups listed on page 1 of the report. We remain opposed to this approach taken to legalize short-term rentals. It merely aims to preserve the interests of short-term rental platforms like Expedia and Airbnb before an uncertain mayoral election by legalizing their hotel operations in our residentially zoned communities. Basically, I also want to say that they address the myth of a 70% reduction. They're using inflated numbers to give the appearance that the short-term rental platforms are making concessions. And furthermore, the draft ordinance, as has come out of the city attorney's office, now has a cap of 0.75%. That's been raised from the 0.7% in the original MOU. Once again, the residents have had no input, no seat at the table. Please reject this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. And the number, 0767, following that speaker will be 2376 on standby. Thank you. 0767, you're up.
0767, just begin speaking. Press, was it star six? I guess we'll go to the next one and get back to him or her.
Okay, we'll go to 2376, please. You are unmuted.
Hi, this is Wally Wolfek. I'm chair of CPC. You have my comments in front of you probably, but I would like to take this opportunity to invite the proponents of this ordinance to come to CPC on our next meeting.
Hello, my name is Jean Froning. I'm from Mission Beach. The carve-out of my community, my neighborhood is reprehensible.
Hold on, guys, hold on. We've got Wally speaking.
Hello, hello.
Mute your phones. Can you mute your phones, please? We've got 2376. That's Wally is, Wally, I'm going to let you start over. You've got one minute.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, as I mentioned, I'm chair of CPC. We'd like to take this opportunity to invite the proponents of this proposal to come to our next meeting and acquaint the community with it. It's October 27th at 6:00 PM. I'm happy to send agendas and joining information to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Wally. Someone has got to mute their phone. We're hearing feedback.
Hello.
Yes, speaker, could you identify yourself and the last four digits of your phone number, just so we get it straight? So PJ, I think we've got 0767 came on late, but I think that was the one. Is 0767 there? And go ahead and unmute and identify yourself, and you have one minute.
0767, please begin speaking.
Hello.
Yes, please.
This is Jean Froning, 0767. Can I speak now?
Yes, you can.
Identify yourself and the last four digits of your phone number.
I'm Jean Froning, 0767.
So PJ, I think we've got 0767 came on late, but I think that was the one.
Chair Hoffman, I believe that the speaker that's trying to speak right now needs to turn off the audio behind her.
Yes, they do, and they're hearing.
Oh, can you hear me now? There's a lag in what I'm watching and what I'm speaking, so.
Yeah, there's a lag. Turn your TV off and just go ahead and speak into your phone, please.
Hello. Hello. My name is Jean, my name. My name is Jean Froning. Here I come. My name is Jean Froning from Mission Beach. In the carve-out of my community. Then I'm from Jean Froning from Mission Beach. In the carve-out of my community, my neighborhood is reprehensible. Maybe the rest of this proposal is a positive move, but handing the short-term vacation rental platforms the entire neighborhood of Mission Beach in exchange is almost criminal. All this has been done without input from my neighbors. A two-night stay in Mission Beach is so nauseous, it destroys our neighborhood. Hotels abound in this area in spite of what they would have you believe. And you are aware of the beautiful hotels in this area. I can tell you from experience that a huge group of people coming in for a two-night stay, eight feet away from my home, is nothing but a no-holes-barred party event. The hotels are equipped to handle the two-night stays, which are only loud parties for two days with no occupancy limits. A two-day limit is not acceptable in any way, and there is no time for the owner to rectify the disturbance. Then another group comes in, and thank you. Larry Misspoke, when he represented Mission Beach Town Council, that we were all.
Dee, thank you, Dee, very much. Let me, before PJ, we go to the next. Let me remind all the speakers that we need you to mute your background noise, mute your TV. There is a lag on the TV. So if you're following the TV, you're going to be lagging the whole time. You've got to listen to your phone. And when you're unmuted, that's the time to begin. You'll have one minute. But please turn down the volume of your computers and your background TVs. That's causing a lot of confusion. Okay, let's go to the next.
Great, so I will go ahead and call 0181.
Go ahead, 0181. I see you there, and you're unmuted, so please begin.
Okay, we will move ahead then to speaker 2562, please. I see 0181 just came online, so let's go forward with 0181. You'll have one minute.
And can you unmute him?
0181 has been invited to speak. Please hit star six and begin speaking. 0181, please begin speaking. You are unmuted. Okay, we're going to move on to the next speaker. Speaker 2562.
2562, you have to unmute yourself. Star six. You are muted right now. And it looks like they fell off. Shall we go to the next? They'll come back.
Yes, we are going to go to speaker 8977. Please hit star six and begin speaking. You'll have one minute.
Alma, I am speaking on the behalf of Airbnb host. I agree that there is a turning point at which too many Airbnbs change the community atmosphere, but I rely on Airbnb to subsidize my personal housing expenses. Please consider this from a small business perspective as opposed to a real estate developer speculating on a community to achieve maximum profit. As a community member and Ocean Beach resident, I want what's best for our neighborhood. Therefore, if you decide to limit Airbnb rentals in San Diego, I would like to suggest the following rather than an unbiased reduction or lottery license. Implement a hold on new Airbnbs, granting preference to owner-operated Airbnbs that remain as a primary resident of said owner. When reducing the number of Airbnbs, please consider limiting vacation rentals of owner and ownership groups holding multiple units first. And maybe create the possibility for developers to invest by implementing a policy in which you offset a new Airbnb with the leasing of a long-term rental in our community. In closing, I can only afford to live in my one-bedroom house because I Airbnb it. I would like to see a resolution that resembles a Ma and Pa strategy as opposed to a corporate America. Hopefully, you'll consider my suggestions and understand my concerns as an Airbnb host and Ocean Beach resident. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Oh my God, I was muted.
PJ, do we have another speaker? Oh, is that 0181? I think I heard you. We can hear you if you'd like to identify yourself and begin.
Yes. Sorry, yes. My name's Gary Wanacott. I'm a past president of Mission Beach Town Council in the 2017-18 period. During that tenure, we, the town council, which was dominated by residents, voted enforcement of the code, supporting safe San Diego neighborhoods. And we also supported the primary only resolution that was passed by the city council and then rescinded. South Mission Beach has no hotels, as was indicated there, because we're a residential community. There are, as Jean mentioned, 1,500 hotel rooms within one mile of the beach here. And I'm concerned about, we already see that many day visitors who try to come here, this is the most popular beach in all of San Diego, who try to come here, are denied by the short-term rental people because they bring in multiple vehicles and they park them in the parking lots. And we'll continue to see that, I think, in the future. We have 5,500 residents here, and we have 235 who own and operate vacation rentals who live in Mission Beach.
Thank you.
So we're a residential community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker will be 3561.
Hello, my name is Ross Stewart, and we own an original cottage on Mission Beach. Issues with short-term rental owners does need to be addressed, and we are in favor of the proposed ordinance as long as it includes strict enforcement with proper penalties and termination of bad actors. We've rented our cottage short-term to guests who are not present since 2010. There are only four homes on our court between Strand and Oceanfront Walk, and the other three, for a majority of that time, have been owned and occupied by full-time residents. We have never had a complaint which proves short-term rentals can coexist with full-time residents if properly managed and monitored. Excuse me. We feel the ordinance that is being considered is a good compromise, properly allowing licensed and monitored short-term rentals to live side by side with full-time residents. We do, however, feel the licenses under the ordinance should be granted based on seniority in the TOT system and not as a lottery. Owners that have been renting for many years or even decades should get a license before someone that recently went into the short-term rental market. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ross. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is 3001. You'll have one minute.
Yes, this is 3001.
State, yes, state your name, and you have one minute.
Yes, my name is Jim Kramer. I live in Dana Point. And I'm calling you guys because I heard about this. I have no ownership stake in any short-term rental anywhere, and I have no businesses in California. I'm not an affiliate of any travel company or website. I'm representing today the thousands of people who come to San Diego, particularly to Mission Beach. I'm talking families, family reunions, that type of thing. We have no alternative unless we go to other, other communities in other states. We have relatives from Washington, Illinois, Pennsylvania, and Texas every year who come for a week or two weeks and stay in a really cool, short-term rental in Mission Beach. Please don't destroy this for all the families, not only here in California, but across the United States, who love Mission Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next speaker will be number 2143.
Hi, my name is Blaine Smith. I'm the president of Save Mission Beach, and I've been a member of the Mission Beach community for more than 15 years. I'm currently a board member on the Mission Beach Town Council and was on the Short-Term Rental Committee for our community. Save Mission Beach is a local working group made up of residents, property owners, property managers, and businesses in Mission Beach. We're dedicated to saving and preserving the benefits and long history of short-term rentals on the Mission Beach Peninsula. Short-term rentals have played a vital role in our community for more than half a century. Save Mission Beach supports the STR regulations proposed by Dr. Campbell. As a representative of Mission Beach, she and her staff understand the need for common sense regulations that protect our vacation rental history and our neighborhood. In addition, the proposed ordinance includes key components from the Mission Beach Town Council's STR recommendations that were overwhelmingly supported by the community last summer. Her proposal offers smart solutions to address the issues commonly voiced by both sides of this debate. In particular, we appreciate the recognition of Mission Beach's unique history of STRs with a designated tier four that includes community-supported limits of 30%.
Thank you.
We also support the.
Thank you, Blaine. Your minute's up. Okay, next speaker, please.
Great, we have about 15 speakers left. Next speaker will be 0491, followed by 2687. Next speaker will be 0491, followed by 2687. 0491, please begin speaking.
0491, you have to unmute yourself. We see you there.
Okay, so I suggest we go on.
There we go. Yes, go ahead and identify yourself and you have one minute.
Hi, my name is Kevin Hastings. I'm a resident of OB and I volunteer on the planning group here. I want to urge you commissioners to reject this proposal. I just want to hit on, I guess, one or two points here. One of the commissioners brought up the one per host limit. This is really just a little bit of paperwork gets around this. You know, anyone with a brother in law, a friend, a corporation with a bunch of employees can have as many permits as they need to run the same business they're doing now. This proposal needs to have a connection to the properties in order to have any sort of effective limits. The other thing PB brought up, this supposed 70% cut is false. It's based on a 16,000 number, which is not true at all. The actual number of tier three and four units that would be subject to a cap can actually grow if this proposal is put in place. If I was a vacation rental owner, I would, I would love this proposal. Unfortunately, I'm not. I'm just a resident watching, watching units disappear. And I got to laugh at these people that say they need to remove housing units from the long term market in order to afford the housing here. I mean, talk about hypocrisy.
Thank you, Kevin. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is 2687.
Yeah, hi, my name is Frank McDermott. I'm a resident of the college area and we, my wife and I have been super hosts here for the last two years. And this is a very important part of our income so we can afford to live here in San Diego. And I just want to make sure that the, the way the ordinance is written right now, it seems that we will be having the same chance of getting a permit as some of these other bad actors. So I would like to ask the commission to reject this ordinance as is and please come up with a way to help create a system that prioritizes permits for people who have responsible hosting history as opposed to the bad actors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is 0858.
That was 0858. There you go.
Hi, my name's Alicia. I also live in College Rose and actually Frank's wife. And I'm actually a seven year Airbnb super host in two cities with an impeccable five star reputation that I've earned in both communities. And this ordinance punishes hosts like me. Please, please reject it as is, increase the permit cap, and reduce the proposed high permit fees. Perhaps I'm unique because I live onsite to my short term rental and promote it only to quiet adults who follow all the rules. This is how we can afford to pay our mortgage and survive, put back into our property and better our community, especially during this pandemic. I've had no other work. We should not be penalized or risk not getting a permit by a lottery system due to a few bad apples in the beach communities or because entire buildings were converted away from residential use. The proposed amendment is too severe and limited for mom and pop hosts like us. Please reject the ordinance as is. Let's make it realistic. Please help create a system that prioritizes permits for people who have a responsible hosting history like myself. I enjoy being a host in my own home and meeting people from around the world. I also think I should have the right to add another in the future after I retire. And our global audience of vacationers wants other options than expensive hotels. They want to cook in a real kitchen and feel settled in a home. Hotels don't offer this.
Alicia, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Next speaker, we will go to, it does not have a number associated with it, but it's listed as A. Givens. A. Givens, if you could please start speaking. Hit star six and unmute yourself.
I believe that might be Aisha Givens with the city treasurer's office, so I think you can move on. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much for the clarification. The next speaker will be 5049.
Hi, my name is Brenda DeGerald. I am local to Pacific Beach, San Diego. I have been in the city for over 13 years and I am a advocate for Airbnb. I'm not a host, but I regularly rely on Airbnb hosts for hosting my family in San Diego. Most of our homes here in San Diego are not large enough or we don't have these extra bedrooms to host our families. So for the holidays, for example. And Airbnb definitely provides a much better experience for my family and for my friends for the reasons the last caller mentioned, being very cleanly, a positive experience and offering so much more than a hotel. And given just the way COVID-19 and other movements in the industry, this is just the preferred way of traveling. So thank you. I would request that the committee reject the proposal as is.
Okay, thank you, Brenda. Next speaker.
Thank you. The next speaker is 6035.
That was 6035. Go ahead, unmute yourself and begin. They're on the screen, but I guess we'll just go to the next one that will catch up. We'll go back to them.
The next speaker will be 9606.
9606, if you can unmute yourself, you can begin.
Okay, let's go to the next speaker, 2475.
Hi, this is Sheri Lightner. I respectfully request that you vote no on this item. The complicated proposed ordinance and identified regulations for licenses and enforcement do not provide the protection of the single family residential neighborhoods that simple enforcement of existing law would. It relies upon hosts obtaining a license in one of four tiers in the hosting platforms and a lengthy administrative hearing process for enforcement of those licenses regulations. While licenses are required by the code, there seems to be no penalty for not having one. If a host chooses not to get a license or a hosting platform chooses to ignore the regulations, what is the consequence? There has been no outreach to La Jolla Shores and yet modifications to La Jolla Shores Plan District Ordinance effectively rezone the single family zone to be part of the visitor zone. This significant change will require a plan amendment. Questions, what will be the geographic allocation of licenses? Are the platform's hosts or city required to monitor the possible parole or child predator status of the transient occupants of the property? In closing, I want to thank you for your service. Urge you to vote no and say, I did not get an email to get the phone in information for this hearing and I do not know why and I think it would be wise for you to look into that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Sheri. Next comment. Next speaker, please.
Next number is 9640.
Good morning, Honorable Commissioner and council member. My name is Colette Stark. I'm a single mom raising three children. My children, I have my children every other week as a timeshare with my children's father who lives in the same neighborhood in Bay Park. I'm against the regulation and the MOU for the following reasons. 20 days per year is a confiscation of my property rights. This number needs to be increased to 150 days per year and a super majority vote to both increase or decrease this number is required. If we are at 16,000 hosts right now, the proposal to license only a few thousand is both unfair and will result in a class action lawsuit of over 10,000 plaintiffs. The city does not need to be tied up with legal battles and conjunction over this. Let the free market economy dictate the number of permits. The more permits issued, the more money the city collects. I am for the proposed regulations for the following reasons. The minimum stay of two nights is a good rule to prohibit and prevent one night loud parties. A two night minimum doubles the cost for party.
Colette, I got to be fair to everybody. We're limiting it to one minute, so I'm sorry to cut you off.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is 4705. 4705, please hit star six and begin speaking.
... rentals, we are horrified. Good morning, this is Joe Lookava. We cringe as new housing is converted to short term rentals. We are horrified as tenants are displaced to convert apartments to many hotels. We tire of the rhetoric that this is all about affordable accommodations in the coastal zone, which is cruel to low income working families. San Diego should follow other coastal cities and treat SERS as the commercial operations they are. I appreciate the efforts of the two parties to fashion a compromise, but are we a city that protects all San Diegans or do we succumb to the special interests of a few? This ordinance is not the answer to San Diego's most pressing problems. Instead, bring back the prior effort to legalize home sharing. Thank you to those who have put in the hard work. San Diego deserves better and can do better. Other cities up and down the state have led on this issue. So should San Diego. Reject the draft ordinance, legalize home sharing, and enforce the current laws on home rentals. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is 0070.
0070, please don't forget to unmute your phone, star six.
Okay, we will move on. 0061, we'll come back to 0070. So right now, please unmute your phone, 0061. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Julie Meyer-Wright and I am at risk of losing quality long term renters in my single rental unit in Berg Rock because of short term renters throwing parties with too many people and too much noise. In addition, workforce housing is a crisis for San Diego employers and every unit taken out of commission makes it harder to be competitive and makes existing rentals more expensive. There are two flaws in the proposed ordinance that haven't been discussed. Yes?
This is Paul Luger, 0070.
Paul, you are going to go, we're going to put you on hold, Paul. We're listening to a speaker right now. Just hold on just a second. And Julie, I'm going to back up your time a little bit, so please proceed, Julie.
Okay, thank you. There are two flaws in the proposed ordinance that haven't received adequate attention. One is the two night minimum and the other is who qualifies as illegal owner. Two night minimums directly impact hotels decimated by COVID-19. Two night minimums make enforcement virtually impossible. Two night minimums are an invitation for the party goers creating situations like the one at Pinnacle and the problems at my complex. Reject this ordinance until there is adequate time for community input. Reject it until an independent assessment of the cost of enforcement is addressed. And in the meantime, let's aggressively enforce existing law. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. And PJ, do you know who that last speaker was?
Yes, that was 0070. So let's go back to speaker. Please hit star six and begin speaking. 0070, please hit star six and begin speaking.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can. Go ahead and state your name and you'll have one minute.
My name is Paul Luger. I'm a former resident of Ocean Beach and now I live downtown. I apologize for jumping in earlier. There's a lag between the computer and the phone. So I just wanted to call in today to say that I think it's extremely important to appreciate the time and effort that council member Campbell has put into this MOU, this proposed MOU. I think that with this issue, you're never going to appease all sides, but I think that this has been the most concerted effort so far to try and work with all stakeholders to try and put something together that takes into account everybody's opinion. I would support the recent comments that Airbnb came in and said that they would like it increased to 1.2% as opposed to 0.75%. But I think that even if it passes at 0.75%, that would be reasonable. And yeah, I think that's all that I have to say. Thank you so much for your time today. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Paul. Next speaker, please.
Yes, before we go to the next speaker, Chairman Hoffman, I'd just like to clarify for those listening. We have about 12 to 15 folks left on the line. Please listen to your phone. You will be unmuted when we are ready to have you speak and I will also call your number. So please do not follow along with the city TV as there is a lag. So the next number is 8032.
Good afternoon, this is Craig Benedetto representing Airbnb. In 2017, we conducted an economic analysis of the benefit of short term rentals in the economy. There are $300 million in direct annual spending in 2017 and $200 million in indirect economic benefit. That's an estimated $500 million in annual economic benefit to the San Diego economy as a result of short term rental spending. That does not include the annual TOT benefit of an estimated $30 million annually. Any cuts in capacity will cut these benefits. So small businesses, retailers, restaurants like Carnita Snack Shack in North Park or Hamburger Mary's in Hillcrest get damaged. The problem with the cap is that it's too low. It needs to be raised to 1.2% to a reasonable level that still represents an over 50% cut in the number of short term rentals in the market. And I want to note something because it said that the 70% number is a false number. The opponents like to claim that the number of short term rentals is high when it serves their purposes. And then in the context of this, like to claim that it's a false number. That is a number that they use. It's a number that's online. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Craig. Okay, next speaker, please.
Yes, we are going back to Speaker 2562. 2562. Please hit star six and begin speaking.
2562. And PJ.
Overhead to 9606. 9606, you've been unmuted. Please begin speaking. Okay, we'll go one more. 6135. Another one.
Wait, wait. We've got 2562. Are you on the line now?
Yes, I am. Thank you. I'm sorry about that. My name is Kathy Eyes. I'm a resident of Mission Beach and have been for over 35 years. I am a member of the Mission Beach Town Council. I was on the Short Term Vacation Rental Committee. And I will tell you, this MOU does not represent all the things that the Mission Beach Town Council came up with for regulation of the short term vacation rental. In addition, I am very opposed to the carving out of Mission Beach that leads to a 60 to 70% rental rate down here, which makes this a hotel zone or a commercial zone. And that is not good because right now it's about 50%. The equality of the property managers and the people that are renting here has gone down over the last two years. Our flies have increased, the litter and trash has decreased. And also, San Diego City Council has not shown to us that they can enforce any rules and regulations as exemplified by the scooter regulations, the cap program, which is still on the books, which you have not been able to enforce, and/or the nuisance neighbor program, which has also not been able to be enforced. And that's not counting the drinking on the beach, the glass on the beach. We are inundated with trash.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Kathy. The minute's up. Thank you for those comments and the next speaker, please.
Yes, the next speaker will be 9606.
9606, please unmute yourself and begin. And PJ, before we go on, you said it very well, but I'm going to say it again. I think a lot of you out there. I, I think a lot of you out there are listening to either your computer feed or the cable feed, which is delayed probably close to twenty, thirty seconds. We really need you to just listen to your phone when you get the queue. You'll get a queue that you're being unmuted, that is your time to speak. Um, and I know that'll take twenty seconds to everyone to hear that. Uh, but let's go ahead to the, uh, next speaker if we can.
Okay, the next speaker is six zero three five.
Five years. Yeah, uh, my name is Mamalene, I'm a resident of Pacific Beach for thirty-five years. Um, reject this proposal. Vacation rentals have been fueling an unmitigated speculative real estate buying spree by Wall Street, that has consumed all the available housing stocks in San Diego. S T V Rs have had a catastrophic impact on existing housing availability and affordability. Short-term vacation rentals have ruined neighborhoods, manipulated the market, created toxicity of unsustainable rent increases that continue to displace tens of thousands of San Diegans and have all but destroyed their quality of life. Jen Campbell is attempting to bypass the voters and recommodify the most basic physiological need and eliminate the security of homeownership from all future San Diegans. Most nefariously, she is knowingly condemning tens of thousands of more San Diegans to live in our parks and die in our streets. As of this morning, there are over two hundred motorhomes and campers permanently living in our parking lots in Mission Bay, and the number of San Diegans made newly homeless keeps growing on the thirty-first of each month. I should like to take this opportunity to remind the planning commission that greed and gluttony-
Thank you so much, your minute is up. Um, we'll have to go on to the next speaker.
The next speaker is seven three four five.
Seven three four five, are you there? Don't forget to unmute.
Hi, this is Toral Patel from Airbnb. While we appreciate Dr. Campbell's leadership on this issue, we oppose this proposed 0.75% cap. We strongly encourage the planning commission to support a modest increase to 1.2%. We know that some of you have mentioned concerns about enforcement or about stories you've heard about party houses. Airbnb has recently worked with the city to remove listings that were causing local disturbances, and will continue to do so by working with local law enforcement. We have a 24/7 phone line where neighbors can report disruptive activity, and they can file a complaint online as well. But what we really need are the tools and enforcement that will come with a comprehensive short-term rental ordinance. We've shared models with city staff that are being used successfully in major cities around the country, including San Francisco and Los Angeles. We stand ready to support the city of San Diego's enforcement with our tools and data, but none of that is possible without compromise. So we urge the commissioners here today to take an important step to find the right balance. We urge you to, to listen to our hosts and incorporate their feedback to find a path forward today. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker.
We have speak, two speakers left. Six six nine four. Please hit star six and begin speaking.
Six six nine four, please begin. All right. We'll try the other one.
Yes, so the other number is nine six zero six. We've called them previously, we will try it one more time. Nine six zero six, please hit star six and begin speaking.
Yeah, hi, this is six six nine four. Can you hear me?
Yes, six six nine four, you are on. State your name, and you have one minute.
Yeah, my name is Fred from Mission Beach, and I really do oppose this M O U. Um, I find that it's, it doesn't include enforcement. Uh, there is no occupancy limits, and the two-night minimum stay is just unacceptable. I would really like this to go back to the writers and have them come up with something new. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I think our last speaker is nine six zero six. And nine six zero six will even wait the twenty to thirty-second delay. You're our last speaker, please unmute yourself and begin. And PJ, while we're waiting, that is the last speaker.
Yes, correct, that is the last speaker.
Okay. Just wanna give them every opportunity.
Nine six zero six, you've been invited to participate and unmute. Please hit star six and begin speaking.
I'm afraid they might have set their phone down. Well, we'll, we'll keep going, uh, we can keep our eye on that, but, uh, I will, at least temporarily, unless that person comes on in the next couple minutes, I'll temporarily close the public testimony portion, uh, and we will get right into commission discussion. Uh, I know there's a lot to discuss, and, uh, we're gonna go in alphabetical order. Uh, and we will start with Commissioner Austin.
Thank you, Chairman Hoffman. This is a sticky wicket if there ever was one.
Wait, hold on, hold on. Doug, I- Let's hear one more speaker before we begin. Yes, uh, can you state your name, and you, and please, uh, begin? You have one minute.
Okay, my name is Sharon Gale. My family and I have used both short-term rentals and hotels the, over the years, because they fulfill different needs. We need both in San Diego, particularly near the beach. Because of the thirty-foot height limit that we've had for fifty years, we don't have enough housing near the beach, but we also don't have enough hotels near the beach. We don't need artificial limits. Uh, please don't artificially limit the number of S T Rs below what the market says we need. Instead, we need to add more housing all throughout San Diego. We need to lift the height limit that keeps people who can't afford single-family homes away from the beach. We, I live in Mission Hills. We do have short-term rentals here, and they haven't been a problem. We need them throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. You were our last speaker, thank you for your patience. Um, they, I will now close the public testimony portion, uh, and let's get right into commission discussion. Commissioner Austin.
Hey, thank you. As I was mentioning, sticky wicket, um, difficult, difficult issue. We've, we've had this issue before us in the past, and when we could meet together, we were auditoriums, uh, with people on both sides. And I'm hearing arguments from both sides, um, and both, and a few people that actually like the ordinance. But, one of the things that, that does need to be done, I do believe we can't keep sweeping this under the rug. We need a legal way to enforce what we have. So I believe that our council member has the right idea in bringing this forward. They've spent countless hours trying to draft something that compromises the needs and the interest of all the groups that are involved. There's a ton of them. And I don't think I'm smart enough to think of all the possibilities, but I do believe this is probably as good a compromise as we're going to find. I'm not gonna say a lot right now, I'm interested to hear what others say, but, you know, I've lived with this. I live in a, in a beach community, and I see the positives and the negatives. Um, it's, it's definitely not black and white. So, I am, I'm gonna stop there, and then I'll look forward to another round. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Boomhauer, but before you begin, I'm gonna go a little bit out of order. After Commissioner Boomhauer, I'm going to go to Vice Chairman Whalen in respect, uh, we'd like to hear his comments before he has to leave. So, Commissioner Boomhauer.
Thank you. Um, so first off, I, I wanna compliment PJ and her team, especially Sabrina, for pulling all the public comments together and getting them out to us. Um, there were a lot, and I think you guys did a yeoman's effort on, on getting that organized and out to us. So, we absolutely need to regulate short-term vacation rentals. Uh, Commissioner Austin's right, I think everybody knows this is an issue. I don't believe there should be a complete ban, but I also don't believe that the current Wild West free-for-all is sustainable. And I also wanna recognize, to the, to the people that have been speaking, I absolutely know that there are bad actors out there, but I also know that there are short-term hosts who follow the rules and need the additional income that they can get by utilizing their property. I also think that Councilmember Campbell and her staff should be competent for trying to solve this issue. Not many politicians would have had the guts to actually try to take this one on. So, I wanna make sure it doesn't get lost in, um, in my comments and in the deliberations of the planning commission today. Having all of that, I have serious concerns with the current proposal. And I, I have to be frank in saying that I'm not sure how we can be expected to vote on, on this in its current form. I'm gonna list through my concerns, I have a lot of them, and many of these are questions, so I wanna go through everything first, and, uh, Lena, or if staff wanna try to address some of this, that's fine. But I'm on the clock, so I, I wanna be able to, uh, get through everything during this time period. First of all, I've got a real concern with the way that this ordinance proposes posting contact information, and my concern is this. We're forcing neighbors to take the lead in policing and enforcement. I think that a much more appropriate response, rather than sitting there and telling a neighbor or, or an adjacent renter that their only option is to pick up the phone and try to call someone who's listed on the little notice that's posted in the front window, and then hope that those people will actually do something. And then when they don't, I, we all know that the next step for that homeowner, if they're frustrated and the noise continues, is to pick up the phone and call San Diego P D, and they've got better things to do with their time. So, it seems like one of the flaws in the ordinance as written is that there, we shouldn't rely on neighbors to, to take the first step in enforcement, and we shouldn't rely on the hosts who are creating the problem to actually fix the problem. It seems like we should have some kind of city portal, both an electronic and a phone number, that's manned twenty-four hours a day, that these people can reach out to. And I get that that's a major cost, but we need to initiate a city response to this immediately, not force the homeowners to just yell into a well and, and hope that they hear an echo at the bottom. I've also got a real concern with the enforcement mechanism. I don't think that this ordinance addresses how, how unlicensed short-term rentals are gonna be policed. We know that this is an ongoing problem because we still have unlicensed cannabis businesses operating in the city of San Diego, and despite the efforts of the city attorney and the San Diego Police Department, we can't shut them down. We just keep playing whack-a-mole with them. I've got a real concern with the straw man situation. One of the speakers talked about this, it was already on my list. I think it's way too easy for a business to collect a bunch of people who have leases, who own property, and then to operate a business model where they're using their licenses as their straw man, um, or putting those people out as their straw man. I think that causing, it's creating a short-term vacation code enforcement team that is then sitting there and trying to differentiate between unlicensed vacation rentals and licensed vacation rentals, and then trying to coordinate all that with the regular D S D code enforcement team is probably, it's a solvable problem, but I think that that's gonna be a logistics issue that Ms. Lowe and her staff are gonna be confronted with. And I've got some real concerns, also in that vein, with where the short-term vacation rental office is gonna be located, because it seems like they're gonna have a lot of different functions overlap with a lot of different city departments. And, and we've got a real danger here of creating a stovepipe situation where there's somebody from the treasurer's office assigned to this office, but then they're not really communicating back to the, the larger treasurer's office. Same thing with code enforcement, same thing with planning and, and permitting. I, I mean, it just seems like, it's, it's a great idea, but I think there's a lot that remains to be worked out in the logistics and the details. I've got real concerns about how this proposed ordinance conforms with the A D U regulations in section one forty-one zero three zero two of the municipal code. Right now, the municipal code says A D Us can't be rented for less than thirty days. We all agreed to that, that makes logical sense to us. I recognize that there's approximately a hundred A D Us that were permitted pre-2017. I know that the city attorney's office has said that those get grandfathered in and they can be used. However, that's gonna be a huge code enforcement issue. If nothing else, code enforcement is constantly going to be doing, dealing with, with complaints against those units because the general public isn't gonna know this A D U's allowed to do this, this A D U isn't. And by the by, we're gonna have the exact same problem with guest quarters, because most people in the universe don't recognize that the difference between an A D U and a guest quarter is a kitchen. And they're gonna see their neighbor has a guest quarter that was properly licensed and is being used for a short-term rental, and they're gonna think it's an A D U and it's a problem. Um, I've got real concerns with the lottery, as it is currently defined. Um, I'm incre-, I personally am incredibly unclear about how the lottery's gonna work. I don't know if it's gonna be first come, first served until all the slots are filled, or if it's gonna be first her, first come, first served until a percentage of the available licenses have been filled, and then it turns into a true lottery, or if we're gonna set a certain date and then collect applications and then draw names to see who the lucky winners are. I, I mean, that's, that's just not defined, and I have a hard time supporting this without understanding that piece. But then I think it's even more complex than that, because we know from the cannabis goat rodeo that if we set up a lottery process where it's first come, first served with a set number of units that are in there, then we also have to set up a mechanism for dealing with the people that don't get selected in that first round. Right now, with cannabis, we're throwing out all those, those unlucky people that did all that work and heavy lifting, and then expecting them to just suddenly magically go through all that effort again when new slots open up. We either need to establish a waiting list, we need to do something so that people understand what that list is and how that's gonna work. Um, I've also got real concerns in a mind, in, in a lottery system that minority and underrepresented communities and neighborhoods aren't going to be able to adequately participate in this. I don't, I, I, actually, there were a lot of people that were talking about a distance requirement, which I thought made sense, and I know they, they're worried about that from a concentration of units. I'm worried about it from a concentration of units, but differently, because I'm afraid that, that communities south of the eight, that people in my neighborhood, normal heights or city heights or university heights that aren't a beach community but may very well want to do a short-term vacation rental, aren't gonna have an equal opportunity to go after this because there are gonna be so many people motivated to do this in the beach communities. And then I've got serious concerns with the cap limit. Um, it seems like it's an arbitrary number. Um, I, I gotta be perfectly honest with you, and I'm a pretty smart guy, but I can't tell you from a practical standpoint what on earth the difference would be, why, why some of the companies would be okay with 1.2% as opposed to 0.75%. I mean, I can do the math, I recognize that 1.2 is bigger than 0.75%, but I, I don't see a rational basis for how we even set that cap. And then I don't see anything in this ordinance as it's proposed that would actually allow for adjusting the cap level so that if we suddenly magically solve our housing crisis, we can fix this, and we can maybe allow for more units to be S T V Rs. Or if we don't solve our housing crisis, but we do start producing more housing, is it always just gonna be a set percentage? And then how is that gonna work if we find ourselves where some neighborhoods are actually getting housing and others aren't? Because we're gonna have the same challenge with having neighborhoods that are underhoused if we have a lot of S T V Rs in those areas. So at this point, and I don't know if anybody will take me up on a second with this, but I'm prepared to actually make a motion that we send this back to the D two council office for more work, and then ask them to bring it back when this has been further fleshed out and further defined, because I personally cannot support the ordinance as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Boomhauer, seconded by Commissioner Granowith. seconded by Commissioner Granowitz, to send this back for a relook based on the issues that were outlined by Commissioner Blumhauer. Commissioner Blumhauer, is that the, all your comments?
Those are my comments. I don't know if Ms. Malina or Ms. Lowe want to try to address any of the questions that I raised, if some of this stuff has been worked out already and I'm just missing it, but I would like to give them that opportunity.
Yes, I agree. Go ahead.
If I can, I wrote down all of your questions, and so I want to make sure that I kind of address each one. And if I did forget, please correct me. So number one is posting the contact information. We have actually discussed the possibility of a hotline or having something for the public to complain. The Good Neighbor Policy has a contact number, and that's something that was actually approved in consensus the last time around in 2018. So it's something that we included. Again, this is something that DSD staff will have to take on, and so we're obviously deferring to DSD staff and what they can do. And that's why we're giving the staff and the operators an entire year. And if we need more time, we would actually maybe delay the starting date. As of right now, it's January 1st of 2022, so that the city staff and everyone can actually get all of these things in orders through their admin regs. That's number one, and I think the idea of some kind of city portal would be something that we can definitely include. And again, that would be part of the admin regs and not the ordinance. When it comes to the enforcement mechanism, I believe you mentioned the unlicensed. And again, the enforcement piece of it, the code compliance, that would be, again, part of the admin regs, which will be worked out and flushed through within the next year with DSD and Elise's staff. The business, let me see, on the code enforcement team, logistics issues and the office. I believe you mentioned where the office is located for the short-term, the Office of Short-Term Vacation Rental. I actually had an opportunity to have an all-hands meeting with all of the department directors and the department heads. There's more than one department or two departments that are involved. It's San Diego PD, it's the City Treasurer, it's DSD. There's a lot of pieces from the city departments. I apologize, that's my dog. It's not my stomach growling, it's my dog. I apologize. So there's a lot of departments and a lot of factors that are involved in this. So it's not just DSD. This does live in the DSD department as of now, but that's why we felt it's important that we do create an Office of Short-Term Vacation Rentals because this is such a big and complex issue that is going to require pieces from all of the different departments: police, city treasurer, city attorney's office. And all of these different entities coming together, our all-hands meeting had everybody there discussing the issues, kind of hashing them out. And we had a lot of the same questions that you had. A lot of these things will get flushed out throughout the year after the ordinance passes. Again, a lot of this is in the admin regulations. In regards to the ADU, let's see, in the guest quarters, there's, I think, as Elise mentioned, there's only 100 of them. And I believe that they have probably, as they become aware of the different licenses for short-term vacation rentals, and once they actually can match that with the licenses from the platforms, I think this will be an easy way to take down any that are unlicensed or illegal. The piece about the lottery. So we did see what the city has done when it comes to marijuana, when it comes to the business relief. You know, first come, first served is sometimes not the best thing to do, especially when there's a cap. And I think we've all seen what has happened there. So we were looking at fair ways of how we can actually have an open process where operators, anybody that is qualified based on our ordinance, anybody that qualifies as an operator can actually apply for a license. Home sharings are, you know, they're unlimited. But for the cap, anybody that is eligible can apply, and there will be a waiting list. And again, a lot of those things will be flushed out in the next year through staff and DSD in their admin regs. A lot of these things are definitely difficult to kind of ascertain right now because there's so much that's involved. The ordinance that we're presenting to you is pretty much a tier approach and the framework of what we want to see happen. That's why we also included an entire year so that the staff can actually work through a lot of these logistics. We also included an opportunity for this ordinance to come back to council or to come back to a committee every year for review because we know we're not going to get this right. And the whole purpose of a compromise is, obviously, nobody's happy with a compromise. That's why it's a compromise. Nobody gets what they want. You know, the platforms didn't get what they want, Unite Here is not getting what they want. We're not getting what we want. But I think that it's important that we have something in the books. We have something that actually creates some kind of structure and framework so that we can continue the work. We've gone through a lot of scenarios to actually get to where we're at right now, and we appreciate all the feedback. But we do feel really strongly that a lot of the tools, the small details, will be flushed out with the admin regs. And we feel confident that Elise and her team and, you know, the rest of the city staff will actually bring about some really good processes to make this work.
So, and I appreciate that, and I know I'm dangerously close to my time, Chair Hoffman, so I'm not going to go too long. But my concern is this: Too often, we, again, Ms. Malina, I want to compliment you guys on taking this on, and I know it's been a lot of work to get to this point. And I know that we're never going to make everybody happy. We're getting 480 public comment emails and the number of people that we had speaking here today, mostly because there's a fear of the unknown. And when government officials and this body and the city council sit there and say, "Don't worry, trust us, we're going to work on admin regs", I think everybody's seen too many times when something gets missed, something doesn't get worked out. People are told, "Yeah, yeah, no, we hear you. We're going to catch that in the regs", and then it doesn't get included. And I think that this is too important of an issue for us to, all due respect, just trust that we're gonna get this worked out in the regs. I mean, I think you're incredibly talented, Ms. Lowe is incredibly talented. I know that we have the capability of doing it, but we've also got 10,000 other things going on, and I'm afraid something's going to drop. So I'm going to leave my moment where it is only because I think it would be much easier for me to support this if some of those development regs were actually flushed out and included as supporting documentation with this so that we can actually see that work. That is all I have, Chair.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know, Ms. Malina, if you've had a more of a response. I'm wondering if you wouldn't mind maybe considering it and come back to us. I'd really like to make sure we hear Vice Chairman Wayland's comments before he has to leave.
And I think Elise had something to say. I know she had her hand up, so I wasn't sure.
Oh, I'll wait for Vice Chairman Wayland to speak. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Chairman Wayland.
Thanks for the indulgence. I appreciate it. Let's see, I guess I want to reiterate again that for at least some of us, this isn't our first time we've looked at this. And it was a marathon hearing in that old convention center room where we had a lot of input. And we struggled and came up with something we could support. There was a not dissimilar pattern of the way it was put together. And, but to begin with, I want to make sure we deal with the existential issue because nothing in Commissioner Blumhauer's comments opposed having rules to pull together to address the problems of short-term rentals and the benefits of short-term rentals. So I do want to point that out. The other thing is, I agree with the city attorney that there are legal and practical reasons for proceeding with an ordinance now. All of us in the commission know the challenges that city has in enforcing regulations when there's a lack of clarity and perhaps even a lack of even language. So I believe I've heard a consensus, at least among the group of our commission, that there is a reason to proceed with this. And with that, you get into the next parts. And also, I deeply respect Commissioner Blumhauer's comments, too. Again, I didn't hear any complaints about the idea itself. It's more, he's asking for serious logistics questions to be answered before we go to council. And that's valid. And perhaps there's a possibility that we'll give adequate direction to staff today, and I don't know that there's any time limit before you go to council. So there may be an opportunity for city staff to address these at a level that both Commissioner Blumhauer and Commissioner Granowitz find satisfactory going forward. Let's see, to the opponents of all short-term rentals, I live in Ocean Beach, and I have personal practical experience with what it's like when they don't go right. I also have personal practical experience with what it's like when they do go right, and it's okay. And to those who say that it is a serious degradation of community spirit, I'd argue, yes, that that can happen, but it also happens with long-term renters who choose not to engage with their owner neighbors. I do think it would be worth addressing the complaint from some of the organized groups that there wasn't adequate public input. I'll leave that to others to follow up on. I think there was enough variation of opinion, as I think it was Commissioner Blumhauer said, or somebody said, that there were enough complaints about this from all sides that clearly we've got a compromise that could work. And you know, and those of us on the commission know that when we hear complaints on the full spectrum, all the way from left to right, to middle to up to down, you're getting close. I also want to comment to some of the people who are fearful on the testimony that the home sharing regulation solves a lot of problems because there's no limit on that. And in my own case, where I happen to have one of these granny flats that could be part of my retirement, I know because I plan to live here for the rest of my life that I'll always be able to rent it out, and that's a source of some ominous. The one policy issue I think that I would like to get us ventilated a little bit more is what Commissioner Blumhauer called the straw man issue. Because, you know, we all have relatives, we all have brothers-in-law. Well, I have an ex-brother-in-law, and he's pretty good, but I wouldn't let him do my home. I think we need to deal with that. And if we can come up with a solution on the straw man, I think much of what Commissioners Granowitz and Blumhauer suggest could be worked out. And then the last thing I have is that a very cynical person, which is not me, might say that Airbnb is edging toward a compromise of 1%. Just call me funny, but it would seem that that would be where we're heading with that. And I think the question for the commission to decide is, is the support of Airbnb, which we would, of course, lock in with a compromise and their full and robust and loud support, as well as the other platform and the unions, would give us something we could count on going forward. They wouldn't suffer the fate of our last effort when we met, and I'll stop there. And if I have to leave before we vote, I wouldn't support the continuance if that's the motion. And if I'm here, otherwise, eat your heart out. I'm going on vacation.
Hey, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Granowitz. And by the way, we heard Commissioner Blumhauer's comments. We haven't heard Commissioner Granowitz's comment. We only got the second, so now it's her turn.
I wanted to make sure that Elise got a chance. I thought she wanted to respond.
Please, yes, Elise, my apologies. Yes, Elise, please go ahead.
Thank you. Elise Lowe, Development Services. As many of you may know, I actually did bring this issue before the city council on behalf of Mayor Faulkner. So I'm intimately familiar with it. I worked diligently on preparing what would be the operational impacts for short-term vacation rentals. So I'm very well aware of the complexities of the operation for enforcement, licensing, software, making sure that we have an adequate portal in order to hear community feedback. I think what's important to note about the difference between the last time this was processed and what's happening now is that we're actually doing what other cities have done, which is presenting before the policymakers a policy framework for which should provide guidance for us to then create the administrative and operational guidance. It doesn't actually do us any good to spend the intense time and energy for every absolute detail for all the enforcement to be created prior to a very controversial policy decision that needs to be made about going forward with this. So I just want to echo with you. We are very well-prepared to come up with the administrative guidance and regulations. But in this instance, how it is being brought before you, it is for a policy framework and for your approval as such. And then we are very clear that we need to create the administrative guidance and policy operations in order to implement what the policymakers approve. So I just needed to state that for the record in terms of the level of detail that you'll get about operations now, which is why I believe it's been put forward to not also be implemented until 2022 to provide us with adequate time in order to do so. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Granowitz.
Yeah, actually, I do agree with, I think, everything Commissioner Blumhauer said and some of what Commissioner Wayland said. I do also want to actually appreciate Venus and Dr. Campbell. I think you guys have gotten further along than anybody else has. And I have only been on the other side, this is my first time actually being on the commission, when you're hearing it. And I went back through my directory and found every speech I made at every meeting and relooked at the issues that came up for me. And I think you're trying to deal with some of those things. But I have sort of a philosophical thing I need to say, which is that residential zoning is residential zoning and that doing, especially the whole-house rentals, are an inconsistent land use in a residential zone. And we're trying to make those work. And I'd like to remind the people who are doing those kinds of things that what they have done is entered into a business rather than just having a home where they're going to raise their children and have their lives and be neighbors. And that when you enter into a business agreement, you take a risk. I know this because I entered into a business as an investor nearly two years ago, and COVID really has taken a toll on that investment. But that was what we understood when we became business owners. And so people who have decided to become short-term renters of this nature need to understand they are inherently inviting risk. And that means that you're not necessarily entitled to always make a, you know, well, make what we're not making now because of COVID, but to make money. So some of what people say, it just rings hollow to me in that I think their expectations need to be adjusted. Having said that, I am willing to try to find the compromise. And I have a problem with what Ms. Lowe just said in that when we approved 600-24, the administrative guidelines were part of the update to the council policy. And for me, I don't trust the city. And so I need to see at least the beginnings of the administrative guidelines before I'm going to even consider... the beginnings of the administrative guidelines before I'm going to even consider approval of, of some kind of a policy, a council policy. And it's, and I think that the public would feel the same way I do, at least the public of people who live in communities. So I'm just putting that out there. And one of my issues is that when you have inherently conflicting land uses, and you have people who are vacationing, and they're mid-week, for them, every day is, is a weekend. But you have people living next door who have children who need to get ready for school and people that need to get ready for work. And the noise abatement ordinance doesn't really make an impact when you have people in backyards doing what people do on vacation and not even necessarily having loud parties, but just people having dinner in a backyard when you have an open window next door. That noise carries. And I know that because I live in North Park, and people want to stay in historic homes, and they want to stay in historic districts. Not everybody wants to stay coastal. And we have had neighbors who've had those problems. And one of the neighbors, at least that lives near me, they actually moved because they had people who weren't loud and partying, but the ambient noise was still louder than what you would have. So additionally, they had people in the backyard that were smoking and the noise, the smoke smell was wafting into the open windows. So I think that, and this was part of my previous comments, is that there needs to be some in your good neighbor policy asking people mid-week to stay out of backyards and front yards after 10 o'clock at night. I, I think that that's reasonable because the noise abatement issue won't really help that kind of, of a life issue. I also don't understand why we can't allow these things in commercial zones. I think that would solve a lot of problems. One of the other issues that came up in my old notes was that if you had, in a residential area, an apartment building, how many units could actually be Airbnb? Because otherwise, it actually becomes a hotel if you have, you know, 12 units in a Huffman, and all 12 are Airbnb, become Airbnb. And there's nothing in the ordinance that talks about that. The other question I had, as it relates, I have a lot of questions about the lottery because we have nothing to read at all about the lottery, is that I think that it's only fair that they're term limited, that you can only get a permit for so many years. And I'm not sure how many years that is in a row, two years? And then there needs to be, and I'm not sure two years is enough, maybe it would be four years. But whatever it is, then that, that wasn't anywhere that I could sort of read it in what I got. So that's helpful to know. Because I think that if we don't do that, then you just have a group of people that are allowed to gain equity, and it, it can not allow new people to come in and a younger generation to have an opportunity. So thank you, Venus. I, I appreciate that. You guys were thinking ahead. Well, I will stop there. I think that was, that was most of the things that I had. But thank you very much. And I do appreciate, I think you guys did a lot of work and you were brave.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Moden?
Yes, thank you. I want to echo a lot of the things that were brought up from fellow commissioners. But specifically, I want to thank Councilmember Campbell and Venus. I know this was a huge undertaking. And you guys are going against the grain to get something implemented that is much needed. And I appreciate the gumption in doing that. I know this is a lot of work. And it's definitely a polarized discussion. And I see both sides of the scales on this. And it's, part of me says, you know, I'm, I'm frustrated at outside investors gobbling up single-family homes, and we have such an affordability issue and a supply and demand issue. Conversely, I know that Airbnbs are a cost-effective alternative for families, especially with children. Hotels just don't give you some of the things that an Airbnb does. I have a couple of questions. Venus, do you, I know that the licensing fee is still to be determined, but do you have a range that you, you've talked about?
There was actually a range in the MOU, and they were based on the fees from 2018. So obviously, without the cost associated this time around, we really can't determine what those fees are going to be like. And those will be brought to council for approval. But we have a range that was based on the 2018 numbers, and that was in the MOU for each one of the tiers.
I do appreciate that this ordinance would preclude one-night stays. I think that's really important. I actually feel like two nights is also too, too low. I would say three nights minimum. That's just my own personal opinion, because I feel like, you know, Airbnbs provide, you know, low-cost alternatives for, you know, people wanting to vacation on the beach, and it shouldn't be used as a mechanism to throw large house parties. So I think the longer the stay, the less likely we'll have those noise issues. That's just a comment of mine. A lot of the functionality or the implementation questions that were raised by Commissioner Boomhauer and also Commissioner Granowitz, I, I tend to agree with. Some things I wanted to throw out there for consideration because I do feel like we need to probably revisit this once a little bit more detail is provided, is what if somebody has a portfolio of Airbnbs? Or are they limited to just now one property? I think that's something that needs to be considered and thought through. Also, will be, people be able to sell their license? So this would, this would kind of hamstring transactions, right? So people may not want to sell if they have a license that's tied to a certain property. And I just don't want this to turn into an, you know, ABC license 48, where people are selling them for $250,000.
They can't do that. It's non-transferable.
Okay. So that, that's also, though, a difficulty for somebody that has an Airbnb and a longstanding Airbnb, B&amp;B with a ton of reviews. I mean, sometimes people purchase those Airbnb advertisements or, you know, listings as part of that purchase. So I think that needs to be thought through and considered. I do agree with what Commissioner Wayland said about the 1%. I actually had that note, why not 1%? I do feel like this is a little bit on the low side. And I also am interested in how this would be allocated for neighborhood? Because what if all of a sudden, everybody in South Park bobbles up, you know, these licenses, and so then they can't be in PD or North Park or other areas? So I don't know if there's a way it can be allocated for neighborhood. I do think that Mission Beach, I appreciate the carve-out for Mission Beach. I grew up in San Diego. I'm very familiar with that. They've had short-term vacation rentals for decades. And that was kind of like, you know, if you live in that neighborhood, you know that that comes with the territory. Just like if you move into SDSU, you know that comes with the territory, you know, many dorms and some potential noises issues. So in my perspective, I would actually like to see the short-term rentals increase in the Mission Beach area. If there's 1,500 now, and you're saying 1,081, you know, there's 420 people that, you know, maybe have had a longstanding Airbnb business in Mission Beach. I think, I think that area is totally appropriate to have short-term rentals. I think enforcement and implementation is going to be a big one. And I think we really need to see those details. I also agree with fellow commissioners saying that this should not be a police, a police issue in terms of noise issues. I would prefer to see some kind of noise enforcement similar to parking enforcement that could be funded through either fines or the licensing, so that this is not an additional burden on the, on the police department. And I am concerned about the lottery, too. I mean, people have had Airbnbs in, you know, in Mission Beach for, for decades, like I had said. And so it seems a little unfair for some, somebody to buy a property, you know, there tomorrow with the intent of having it as an Airbnb when somebody's had, you know, a property there for, for a very long time and is a, you know, acts in good faith in their, in their income on their rentals. That's all I have.
Chairman Hoffman, can I, can I address something really quick? You know, a conversation that the city attorney and I had extensively was in the grandfathering in of good actors. Because we do feel, at least our office feels strongly about rewarding the good behavior and rewarding about actors. As we kind of dug into that issue and explored it a little bit more, we were trying to figure out an equitable way on how do we grandfather and who do we grandfather in, and who is considered a good actor. And what I've learned is that legally, it, it's kind of a gray area because, you know, what, what constitute a good actor? You know, is it someone that doesn't have complaints? Is it someone that pays their TOT taxes? A lot of the good operators actually are not listed in the TOTs because they have a bulk remittance by their platform. So they might not have a record on TOT, or because, you know, they're, they're, they might not have a record, but it doesn't mean that they're not paying. At the same time, we also know that there's a lot of people that don't like short-term vacation rentals, and they might just be calling on their neighbor short-term vacation rental because they just hate it. They just hate the idea of short-term vacation rentals. And that house might have a lot of complaints that are not really merited. So we were trying to find a way that would be equitable and that would be legal to actually grandfather in those people. And as of right now, we really couldn't find a way. And I don't know if Heather has anything to say, but, you know, looking at this, we really don't know how we can equitably and legally define who a good actor, who the good actors are, because we would feel that some of the good actors might get passed, might get passed on because they either don't have a record on TOT, or they might have some, some things on their home because of people that just don't like the short-term vacation rentals. Heather, did you, do you want to add anything to that?
Sure. I'll just add that, you know, the issue with this ordinance and some of the provisions in it, including who can get a license and how, is subject to the equal protection clause that's in both the federal and the state constitution, which requires that the city treat parties equally under the law if those parties are alike in relevant aspects. Any proposed regulation that would treat similarly situated people differently must be supported by a rational relationship to a legitimate state purpose. And a court here is unlikely to find that a rational basis for a land use regulation that focuses on users rather than the property and the nature of the property use could be suspect. So that's where one of the considerations we need to keep in mind.
And, and I'd also like to add in regards to, I think, the Commissioner Granowitz and Commissioner Moden, a lot of the things that have to do with enforcement, and we could add to the good neighbor policy. That's, like I said, it's a policy that was approved back in 2018. But there's things that we've learned now. So the noise, the backyard, cutting down the backyard, a lot of those things we can definitely incorporate into the, the good neighbor policy. And a lot of those things we could continue to update as we see fit. And as we continue to kind of learn how this is going to roll out, there's obviously changes that, that we'll have to make along the way. So thank you, Chairman Hoffman, for letting me speak.
Thank you for addressing that. Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Moden, was that it?
Yeah, that's it. I mean, I know this is a very difficult piece of legislation that you, you're pushing forward. And I know you've done a really, really good and in-depth job, Venus. So I just want to acknowledge your efforts on that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Otsuji. Before you start, Elise, did you have a comment here? Please, go ahead.
I just needed clarification on Commissioner Moden's comments regarding Mission Beach. She stated a number that there were 400 short-term vacation rentals in Mission Beach. And I just wanted to make sure I heard that correctly to know, make sure you have the right information.
No, no. What I was saying was Venus had said that there's currently 1,500 short-term vacation rentals in Mission Beach. However, this proposes 1,081 to be the licensed amount. So what I was saying is 420 approximate, you know, short-term vacation rentals would get, lose their ability to operate as short-term vacation rentals in Mission Beach. And I, I feel like it should probably remain at the 1,500.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Otsuji?
Thank you. I'm in basic agreement with Commissioner Boomhauer and Granowitz and Moden's comments. I won't be repetitive in the comments that they made. I think the important part of their comments is basically taking the time to look at some of the details that would be part of this ordinance and get an understanding of its outcome and impact of what everybody is looking for. I think that's the main concern of the individuals that have come forth in regards to this new ordinance. And I think it's important for us to spend that amount of time. And being on the planning commission for quite a while, that's always been the situation, that the devil is in the details. And I think it's important that we specifically address, especially Commissioner's Boomhauer's points in the time, hopefully, that we will give them to come back to us in regards to that. Because I think that makes a very important case for support of the total ordinance. Right now, a lot of work and a lot of good work has been done on the ordinance. I think it has a good structure to it right now. But we need to look at the major details that will give the meat and the value to this ordinance more than anything else. And as always, you know, the devil's in the details. And we've been there quite a few times. And I think it's important for us to, to spend that short period of time, also to the fact that the situation that we're going through with COVID-19 is put a hindrance on many of the things that we're doing, and it slows down, has slowed it down. One of the main thing, one of the things that I like to have more discussion on is basically in the details of the health issue of these facilities. You know, what kind of requirements are going to be required? Will it be following the same situation as a hospitality unit? Or, you know, how is that going to be remedied more than anything else? That was the main thing that hasn't been brought up. So I thought I would just bring that up. And I'll leave my comments at that point for time being. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and give you my comments. But we can go through another round. And all you have to do, we won't go in order, just raise your hand after, after my turn here. This is, this has been going on since 2007. There's a real balance of interest here. The points of view we've heard today and reading in all the, the written testimony are all legitimate points of view. So this is a compromise. And, and I believe it's, for the most part, a fair one. I will agree, and I really appreciate the effort and time and thought Commissioner Boomhauer has put into his comments. Many, many good points brought up, very thought-provoking. However, I do, and maybe I differ, but I do trust the staff on this one, that we will have a year to work this out. We will, I, I think the kinks, they're going to get tested, they're going to get tweaked, it's going to come back after a year. I think that was stated. I, I, I trust that, that I trust that we'll take care of that. I think this is very different than the marijuana outlets. It's, and it's been studied for such a long time. It's a lot better to me than waiting longer with no regulations in place. We have over 16,000 units that are causing so many issues with so many people. The longer we wait, the longer this problem goes on. And even if we went back and continued it and went through all these issues, we're all not going to be satisfied at the end of the day, in my opinion. I think there's going to be differences. So I cannot support the continuance. I would like to go forward today. A couple of things that I'd like to see would be, I like the three-night minimum stay. I agree with Commissioner Moden. I think, too, is not enough. I'd like to see a better definition of host. That was one of my questions at the very beginning. I could, I can live with 0.75%, but 1% would not bother me at all. As far as the good actors, I think that was a good explanation. There's, that's just so difficult to be fair. Who's a good actor, who's a bad actor? I get that. So I don't think I would touch that. But, but those are my comments. I would like to see it go forward. Now, we can do one of two things. We can go through another round or we could go ahead and take a vote on that motion, but...
To the chair.
Yes.
Because I really do have to go. Perhaps it would be good to vote on the motion with respect to Commissioner Blumhauer and then go another round and then I'll take off.
Okay, I think that sounds like a good idea. And at least we will have a majority there. Does any of the commissioners have any problems with going ahead and taking that vote? Okay, with that, we will take the vote. The motion on the floor is that there, that we continue the item, send it back to staff to address up the issues that Commissioner Blumhauer brought up. And we'll go through a roll call now. Commissioner Austin.
No.
Commissioner Blumhauer. I'm sorry, Commissioner Blumhauer, I didn't hear that. Okay. Your audio is going bad, but I heard it, yes. Commissioner Granowitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Moden?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wayland?
Aye.
Commissioner Otsuji?
Yes.
And I am an a. So that motion passes.
Chair, can I ask for a clarification? Was a motion to continue to a date certain?
Yes, we would like to make this a date certain. So why don't we, I'd like to ask staff what you feel would be an appropriate date.
I'd like to actually get something to you before the end of the year. We ideally would like to have this maybe by your December commission meeting, if that's okay.
One more point of clarification. The, if the planning commission doesn't make a recommendation within 60 calendar days of today, then the city council can take action without the planning commission's recommendation. So I would recommend that the continuance be within 60 days.
And I think that would be all of our preference, of course.
Chairman Hoffman, this is PJ Fitzgerald Development Services. I just wanted to advise you that we have a number of planning commission dates in November and December that could be available. That would include November 5th, November 19th, December 3rd, and December 17th.
I, I'm optimistic. And if, and if the city attorney is agreeable, would November 5th be enough time for us, for you and I, Heather? Or would you like more time?
It depends, I mean, I guess I would have to defer actually more to Elise if we're trying to bring back some sort of administrative regulations. I'd have to defer to city staff.
Actually, I would, yes, it would be Elise letting us know what actually would be good for her, time-wise.
No, I don't believe that that's enough time whatsoever. In fact, that's essentially going from what was upwards of one year to less than four weeks. So absolutely not. I think that realistically, if you want to get some level of detail on making changes to posting contact info, level of detail of what the Office of Short-Term Vacation Rentals looks like between four different departments. If you want level of detail on the lottery, if you want level of detail and analysis on what the number of the cap should be and what a basis should be for a number of a cap, could take anywhere from three to four months to really study that issue and come back to you with a factual basis. And so therefore, I truly don't believe that less than four weeks is enough time to come back. If we need to come back within 60 days, we'll do our best to come back. And I would target December 3rd.
I really do have to go now through the chair. I think, even though I voted against the motion, I think we have the right path forward. And have a good rest of the day, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so would the, we took a vote on the motion and I think we'll have to, we don't want to rescind that. Let's take another vote on a date certain. And I believe December 3rd would be the target date. And let's go ahead and take a motion on that.
I'll move that the date be December 3rd.
That's second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Austin, a second from Commissioner Moden to continue this item to a date certain December 3rd, 2020. And let's go through roll call. Commissioner Austin?
Aye.
Commissioner Blumhauer? You're squeaking. Commissioner Granowitz, I'll take that as an aye. Commissioner Moden?
Aye.
Commissioner Otsuji?
Aye, aye.
Vice Chair Wayland is gone, so he's not voting on this. And Chairman Hoffman is an aye. So that motion passes to continue this item till December 3rd. Now, with that, I'm going to, before we adjourn, I want to ask PJ if there are any callers that we left behind for the public non-agenda items.
Thank you, Chairman Hoffman. After hearing the testimony from Ms. Leitner, we did go back through our inbox for the web form and double-check. There were four members of the public that were not granted the, or provided the phone-in number at that point in time prior to the meeting. We apologize very much. We sent them all emails with the call-in number about 45 minutes ago and none have called into this meeting. So we will follow up with them and let them know that the meeting has been continued to December 3rd.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. And thanks for all the work from staff. With that, Commissioner Granowitz.
Yeah, is Elise still on the line? Elise, my comment was to present a framework for the admin guidelines. It wasn't necessarily to have all the detail. There's no way you can do that. But at least if we had a framework for what's going to be in admin guidelines, I think, I think that's reasonable and that probably could be something that you could get done, but not to have something completely done. That's why I tried to say framework. I didn't want to scare you to death.
Okay, good, that's helpful. I concur with you. We can definitely come back with a framework by that time. Thank you very much.
I agree, too.
Thanks for that clarification. So with that, we now stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.